I'd like to open tonight's meeting, July 5th, 2022. I hope everyone had a good Fourth of July. Before we go any further, I would like to say that in accordance with Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am advising all those in attendance this evening that this meeting is being recorded by the Town of Oxford. In addition to Town of Oxford, Mr. Fleming of 59 Corbarg Ave is recording the meeting. And at this time, I'd like to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the first thing on the agenda tonight, and I've asked Town Council to come here to address a number of legal issues that have been brought up before the Board. And I thought the best way to handle these legal issues is to go to the people that have the experience and the expertise in municipal law and to give us their advice on how we need to handle some of the things that have come up. And the first thing that comes up at the last board meeting, selectmen's meeting, an issue was raised about the process by which the chair was elected. As a result, we reached out to Town Council, who then reached out to the State Ethics Commission. In order to address this issue, reorganizing, and I'm saying revoting, the chairman of the Board has been placed on the agenda this evening. And at this time, I would like Attorney Mark Rich and Mark Terry to come up and address the Board as to what we're actually doing tonight. So guys, if you could come up, I would appreciate it. And they are from Legal Counsel, KPL Law Firm. Guys, thank you for coming tonight. I'm sure we'll be hearing from you several times. Mark?
Certainly. Good evening. Mark Rich from KP Law, Town Council. It's my understanding at, I think it was the last meeting, an issue was raised about the process for the election of the Chair of the Board and who could vote for that position and concern about an ethics matter. And, you know, as many of you probably know, we represent about a third of the municipalities in the Commonwealth as General Counsel. We represent a large number of municipalities additionally as Special Counsels. So this is obviously an issue that comes up every year with Board reorganizations. And as you also know, under Chapter 41, Section 108, Town Meeting sets the salaries for all elected officials, which is intended to essentially remove from consideration the financial aspect of the stipends or salaries because it's set not by the Board itself but by the town's legislative body, Town Meeting. And that, again, is by statute, Chapter 41, Section 108. So this issue that arose about whether the individual who's been nominated to serve as Chair of the Board, that individual could vote for themselves based upon the additional stipend is somewhat of a novel situation because, again, you have 351 municipalities, many of them towns, but also you have city councils, some of which actually vote for their own president, things like that. And so this issue comes up on a regular basis, and it's very unusual that a member of a body would essentially be forced not to be able to vote. But there's this issue of whether that vote constitutes a financial interest in a matter. So we did follow up with General Counsel for the Ethics Commission based upon the legal letter that was provided to the town. And in discussion with Deputy General Counsel at the Ethics Commission, the determination or the recommendation was made that the individual who was nominated would best be served to indicate publicly, so to the public, that that individual would not be taking the stipend, specifically the extra stipend, I understand that that's an issue to be addressed further based upon what the individual determines. But the issue is that differential. So the recommendation was that the individual indicated they would not accept that differential rate, thus resetting so that all the interests would be equal, and that would allow the individual to be nominated and vote as they determined appropriate. And in that discussion, you know, we did indicate that the Board had already organized, and that did not occur. It's my understanding that the Chair had announced that he wasn't going to take the stipend to staff and to the Treasurer's Office, but that announcement hadn't been made publicly. And so the discussion led to a determination that it would be best to revote, reorganize however the Board sees fit, but bring that matter up again so as to cure that issue. So that's what brings us here tonight, is the recommendation that the Board revote the chairmanship and that the individual, and it would be an issue for any one of the five members, if an individual wishes to vote during that process, having been nominated, that individual would have to publicly indicate that they would not be taking that Chairman's additional stipend amount. So that's what brings us here, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before we go on, any comments, any questions by any of the Board members, the Town Council?
Mr. Chairman, I just need to indicate to you and through you to Town Council that because KP Law represents an opposing party to me in a different legal matter, I can't actually receive advice from them, and I don't consent to receive advice from them. So I'd just like to make you aware of that.
Mark, any response to that?
That's the individual's decision. I have no comment on that.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so why don't we, I'll accept nominations for Chairman of the Board.
I nominate, I'm a blank.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion?
Again, if I may, if you are to be nominated and you're, you would have to...
Oh, yes. Thank you. At this time, I would like to say that if I am elected Chairman, I will not take any stipend from the town for my balance of my service. Now I'll call for the vote.
Discussion, please, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you know, obviously, the last meeting maybe wasn't as polite as we would aspire to. And I'd like to take this opportunity while we're revoting for you as Chair to ask if there'd be more of a commitment to address some of the issues that we brought forward to you, things like public comment and a better responsiveness of getting things on the agenda.
Well, I think I addressed that to you at the meeting. I made it quite clear that if you have any requests regarding anything, send me an email requesting that. And I'd like the public to know at this date, I have not received any request from Mr. King regarding that. And Town Council, if you'd like to chip in on that, I would be happy to hear your comment.
I think, obviously, that the Chair would determine how best to undertake that communication. Under the open meeting law, the Chair has certain specific authority. You know, the Chair determines who gets to speak at a public meeting, and the Chair ultimately determines what goes on the agenda based upon the fact that only those matters reasonably anticipated by the Chair would be placed on the agenda. So, you know, again, it matters would have to be brought to the Chair, and then the Chair can consider them, and that is one of the authorities of the Chair to determine what will go on the agenda and what won't go on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, Attorney Mark Reich wasn't elected to the Select Board. I'm asking you, as the Chairman, for a commitment to work with the members about the issues that we bring forward and to make sure that they're addressed for discussion.
I think I have. I think any requests that people have asked, I've responded to. Maybe I've not put it on the agenda yet, but I certainly answered people. And I would like to repeat that you have not once sent me an email requesting anything to be put on the agenda. And I think it's important that you understand that, and that's the commitment I'm making. If you send me a request, like I've asked, like every other member of this Board has to do, and some have, I will certainly look at it and consider putting it on the agenda. That's my answer. If you want to go beyond the legal thing, then that's why Town Council's here tonight, to answer that question. I don't know what else I can tell you, Robert.
Yeah, I understand. I think you've made yourself very clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Any other discussion? Any other comments? I will call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
I vote yes. I've declared that I will not take any stipend. I remain Chairman of the Board, and I thank fellow members for their support. Thank you, Mark. Moving right along, next thing on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes dated May 24th, 2022. A pleasure of the Board. I would like to move that the Board approved minutes dated May 24th, 2022, as written.
I will second that motion.
No, I'm asking for the motion.
Oh, okay. I will make that motion.
And you a second?
I will second that motion.
I would be looking for any comment, questions regarding that? There being none, I will call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Let the record show, and I vote yes. Five in the affirmative, none in the negative. All right, next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. I've asked DPW Director Jared Dolevall to be present to kind of give us some kind of an overview of what we're looking at regarding our sewer rates. So Jared, if you want to come up and...
I'll read that first.
Well, on your way up, I will read the public hearing notice. Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 5th, 2022, at 7:05 PM in the second-floor meeting room of the Town Hall, which is located at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Massachusetts, 01540. The purpose of the meeting is to accept written and oral comments regarding adjustments to the sewer rates. Written comments will be accepted in person or by mail at the Board of Selectmen's office at the Town Hall, Oxford, when sent to the Board of Selectmen, Oxford, Mass., USA. And this notice can be reviewed online. So Jared, thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate your input.
Motion to open the public hearing.
All right, I will make a motion to open the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second that.
Thank you. I will call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Okay. And I would like to note that...
And you are?
Then I'm voting yes, too. Yes, thank you. I got it. This is a public hearing. All comments need to be directed towards the sewer rate request, and we need to stay on topic. So Jared, please give us your input on this and why we need to do this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Town Manager, Board members. A pleasure to be here tonight. Topic of discussion, as the Chairman had alluded to or referenced, is FY 2023 sewer rate adjustment, proposed adjustment. And this is for the North Service System sewer rate only. I just want to point that out from the onset here. As you all may well know, the Oxford Sewer System is divided into two separate systems, two different rates. We have a North Service Area and a South Service Area that services essentially just IPG and a few households along Old Webster Road. The North Sewer System essentially spans from the Oxford High School north along Route 12 and on areas of Lester Street, Route 20 and Therapon Village condominiums. All the sewage that is collected in this North Sewer Service Area is conveyed through the Town of Auburn and up to the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Facility for treatment in Milbury. So that's important to note, is that in Oxford, again, as you may all well know, we do not have our own sewage treatment facility. So the sewage that we collect from households or businesses has to be conveyed to a neighboring treatment facility. So in the south area of town, that goes to the Webster Treatment Plant through Dudley First, and then in the north area of town, it goes through Auburn up to the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Facility. And we pay fees for that service. So the North Sewer Service Area rate has not been adjusted since, to take effect since July 1, 2019. So that was for FY 2020. So it's been a few years, rising costs and changing conditions, flow conditions, is really the primary reason why every so often we have to come before the Board of Sewer Commissioners, which is the Board of Selectmen here in town, for a rate adjustment. So we kind of anticipated this along, during the budget process in the end of last year before Town Meeting, knowing that costs and inflation and things were creeping up, fuel costs, energy costs. At the same time, we were communicating with our counterparts in Auburn, Upper Blackstone, trying to get an idea of what the changes in the fee structures would be that we need to pay for that transport and treatment of our sewage. So we have seen increases. We're seeing about a 2% increase for the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Facility for FY 23. The intermunicipal fees for the Town of Auburn are still unknown. I reached out to the DPW Director there as recently as today. They're doing a rate analysis to basically see, basically confirm the rate that they're charging off to the Town of Oxford, that they're covering their costs in any contingencies on their end. So they're still underway with that assessment. But we figured on in the budget process, a minimum of 3% increase. I'm told that there will be an increase, they just haven't pinpointed that yet. So a little bit about Oxford's system, too, just kind of backtracking here, sewer operations in town are covered by an enterprise fund. And that enterprise fund in the Town of Oxford is funded entirely by revenue received from sewage usage charges or sewer rates, also betterment payments and permit fees, but primarily it's through user charges. So it's 100% funded by essentially the users of the system. It's not subsidized by the general fund like it is in some other communities. So only users of the system pay to operate it and to maintain the system as well. So based on an FY 23 operating budget that was appropriated of $462,000, $462,051 and a projected revenue forecast of $494,169 to offset those expenditures and, for the first time, try to generate a surplus in revenues to ensure that we have more revenues than we have expenditures, right? I think that makes sense to everyone, that we have to have the money coming in before we can make those payments, whether it be intermunicipal fees or maintenance of the system and whatnot. So in talking with and consulting with the Finance Director a little bit over the past few months on this, there's been years where we've cut it really close, and the Department of Revenue, as they're doing their audit at year-end, has brought this up to us. And I'm told it has held up the tax rate in past years because of this. So we want to ensure for the first time that we're really, in a sense, overestimating those revenues for a really contingency plan. And I think going into this year more than ever, with general unknowns, uncertainties, rising costs, I think that's very important. So we're looking at, really it comes down to about a 5% contingency over the expenditures. Plus, during the budget process, we actually had reduced some of our expenses, namely in the equipment line of the budget, where you see that $32,000, about $32,000 difference between the revenue forecast and the expenditures. So with that, the current rate right now for the North Sewer Service Area is $12.35 per thousand gallons of sewage. And we base that, we bill based on water usage rates that we get from, you know, meter readings from Aquarian or in a few manual reads that we do on a quarterly basis. The proposed rate is $13.63 per thousand gallons, which marks a 10.4% increase. It's precedent for that level of an increase. Actually, the last time we had done so, leading into FY 2020, it was about a 12.5% increase or so. What that means for the typical, let's say, three-bedroom household is approximately $17.50 increase on their bill, their quarterly bill. For a four-bedroom, it'd be a little under $24 per quarter extra with this. Business such as Walmart, it'd be about a $260 increase or so per quarter. So it's, again, the North System rate is recommended to increase, to raise revenue, really to offset increased costs to operate the system and also to potentially cover any revenue shortfalls. If we do end up with a surplus of revenue, it can be, it can contribute to retained earnings. It could go to our sewer stabilization fund for a rainy day. It could be also appropriated at Town Meeting for capital improvements as well. We're fortunate that our system's relatively young, about 20, you know, 20-some-odd years. So, but we don't want to do too much deferred maintenance. We'll end up like we are with some of our other infrastructure. So I think that's basically it. So you happy to answer any questions regarding the increase?
Okay, so I'd like to open up to the Board. Any questions, the Board members first, regarding what Jared just went over? Any questions from anybody?
Yes, through the Chair. If I'm reading this right, so the $462,000 operating budget and the $494 forecast, is that taking into account this increase or is that before this increase?
That's accounting for it. So during the budget process, we were accounting for an increase in the rates.
You didn't actually include it here, and I don't recall. Do you know offhand what the balance in the reserve budget currently is?
I don't know that. Katie, kind of the Finance Director, would probably have that handy. I didn't, I don't have that information.
Through the Chair, Town Manager, would you happen to know that offhand? I know it's kind of coming out of the blue.
No, I wasn't prepared for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Robert, you all set?
Yeah.
Any other comments? So basically, a three-bedroom house, their cost per year would go up about $68 per year.
Yeah, when you look at it.
Now, how long is this good for? Is this for one year or is this three years? Or, I know, I think you said the last time it was 2020, so it looks like for two years we've held that rate. Is that, how long is this rate, do you think, going to be good for?
Well, it's tough to say, right? Things are constantly changing. Even on an annual basis, I mean, really, the revenues are largely based on the usage. So as we've seen, and, you know, any budget is, you know, a well-intentioned, well-thought-out plan and roadmap for that fiscal year. But as we saw back in FY 20, going into COVID, the flow's completely tanked, and so did the revenue. So we'll have to, we look at this on an annual basis.
Annual basis.
It's tough to say, so...
So you could come back next year and ask some more? You could stay the same? I don't think it'll ever decrease, but it doesn't seem that that ever happens.
Yeah, costs have, tend to, you know, transport costs, again, everything tends to increase a few percentage points, couple of percentage points a year, unfortunately, cost of doing business, but...
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just add to the discussion as well, several years ago, when I first came to Oxford, one of the things we did with the predecessor for Director Duval was to look at the overall costs related to hooking people up, whether it's a home, a condo, or a business. And what we identified after doing homework is that the town actually was so below what would have been the normal average costs related to hookups, that the Board, prior to this Board, had actually taken the position, through the recommendations of the DPW Director, to actually increase that cost so that eventually that could be put more into retained earnings and to help offset those kinds of things, because there's so few users for sewer in this town. It's not like the entire town is hooked up. That's one thing. And then, obviously, we have other aspects related to the pandemic in which the school, which was one of the largest users of our system, was not in session. And so we really didn't have that. So I think the DPW Director has been mindful of that, and one of the things now that we're seeing is we have to make an adjustment. And that's what the purview of the Board is, but it's made with, hopefully, the information that we have presented, which is, you know, something where there hasn't been any increase to the cost. And this is the recommendation to go forward by the DPW Director.
All right, thank you for that input. At this time, I would like to hear any comment from anyone in the public. Just want to remind anybody that we're talking about the sewer rate, and I think all comments need to be directed in that direction. So if anybody wants to come up and ask a question of Jared or make a comment, come on up. Rick, come on up.
How are you doing?
Just state your name, Rick, and address, please.
Richard Backer, 24 Burbank Street, Oxford, Mass. I just got one question about a statement he made about not being any water treatment centers in Oxford. Because I was just up at Ashwood Ave, up there in North Oxford, and like two streets away, there was, I'd never been down that street ever before, happened to go down that street, and I saw a water treatment center. And I stopped, you know, and the Director came out and talked to me. He goes, "Yeah, is this the water treatment center for Oxford like last 20 years?" And I was like, "Wow, you know, I've been here all this time, never went down the street before, and happened to see this." So I just didn't know, you know, what that facility is actually for, is it for the sewers or some other type of water treatment center for Oxford? You know what I'm saying?
Good question. Thank you. Jared, could you address that for Rich?
That is true. There is actually a private entity, in a sense, Oxford-Rochdale Sewer District, which takes a small portion of Oxford flow, primarily up on Merriam District area. But since we've done and looked into expanding in the North Service Area, they don't have sufficient capacity at that plant to accommodate us. So, and they really operate as their own entity, even when it comes time for sewer tie-ins, all of that, we don't really get involved with that. So they have their own fee structure, and they charge their users, you know, with their own fee structure. So we don't get involved with the Oxford-Rochdale Sewer District very much.
Rich, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and that's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else's public comment? All right, to be no one, what's the pleasure of the Board? I guess we need to make a motion to close the public hearing, and I will be looking for a motion to do that. I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. I will call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
Robert? Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Let the record show, five in affirmative, no negative. Public hearing has been closed. So what's the pleasure of the Board? We're looking to go to, what, $13.25 for every $1,000, right? Do I have that right? $13.63, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman...
Yes.
As much as I understand that right now it's very difficult for people to increase the costs, I think that Jared is correct, looking at these numbers, and we really do need to do this for the long-term funding. And so therefore, I'd like to make a motion to increase the proposed rate for the North Sewer District to $13.63 per thousand gallons.
Thank you, Robert. I will look for a second.
I will second that.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. I will call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So let the record show that the Board of Selectmen approved the rate increase for the upcoming year by a margin of five. An affirmative, no negative. Thank you. All right. Next thing on the agenda, we're at a point, the Board needs to address something that hasn't been addressed in several years. And that has to do with Town Manager goal-setting and the process of how to do that. And what I've asked is Mark Terry to come here tonight, who is our Labor Council Attorney, and to give us some guideline as to what the process is that we should take as a Board on setting goals for our Town Manager. And that being said, Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you so you can help us out on dealing with this issue that hasn't been dealt with in quite a while.
Sure. Happy to be here. And for those of you who haven't met, my name's Mark Terry. I'm actually with Myrick O'Connell, I think the Chair had previous reference. I'm working with Attorney Rich. We're actually with different firms. So my scope of work with the Town, and I've been working with you personally for about 20 years, a little bit more, and my firm's been representing the Town, I think, back to the 80s. So the issue is that the Chair has outlined it is part of the evaluation process that includes goal-setting for the Town Manager. And what we discovered in sort of a recent process is that there's some things that were being done, because there were some goals set at different times, but the manner in which that was done was not necessarily consistent either with what the law really requires in terms of it being a set of Board goals rather than individual member goals, but also wasn't necessarily consistent with the employment agreement that the Board has with the Town Manager. So I wanted to start, and forgive me for referring to my phone, but I want to refer to the provision in the Town Manager's employment agreement, just on this one thing. It's one paragraph long. And it's Section 5, Paragraph A, says, "Annually, the Board, with the input of the Town Manager, shall define the goals and objectives which it determines necessary for the proper operation of the Town and the attainment of the Board's policy objectives, and shall further establish a general priority among those various goals and objectives. Said goals and objectives to be reduced to writing. They shall generally be attainable within the time limits specified, excuse me, and within the annual operating and capital budgets and appropriations provided by the Town in the events, excuse me, that have occurred during the year. Goals to be finalized by July 1st of each year, provided the failure to meet this as we sit here on July 5th, the deadline will not constitute a breach of the agreement." And so the obligation on the part of the Board is, as it says, to come up with goals, take the input of the Town Manager, and to adopt them as a Board. And I think what was happening in the past was there was discussion, individuals provided their own individual goals, but the Board didn't necessarily come together and vote them and say, "This is what we, as a Board of Five, think should be the goals." So what's going to inform my advice is both the employment agreement that I just read, that one particular provision, but I think it's also important to tie this to the open meeting law. And there was a decision that came out about three, four years ago that outlined how the evaluation process works for folks in a position like the Town Manager. And it's not specific to Oxford, it's a statewide interpretation of the open meeting law, but it's a decision from our Supreme Judicial Court. And interestingly, it was a place where they didn't necessarily agree with the Attorney General's office. And what that says is, when you do the evaluation, each individual member should do their own individual evaluation, present it to the Chair or a third party, I always recommend it be the Chair, and then the Chair takes all that information, tries to synthesize it into a single document that represents the view of the Board. And that's presented back to the Board. Nobody gets to see it beforehand except the Chair, presents it to the Board members... except the chair, presents it to the board members, had an open meeting, and the board decides whether the chair has done a fair job representing the views of the board as a collective. This is something that former Chairman Lamarche had done last year, I think it was. And so what I'm suggesting to you in terms of a process for goal-setting kind of follows the same model, which is to suggest to you that in order for you to be prepared and have an efficient meeting on this, which I know you have scheduled for a few weeks from now, is that each member outline a set of goals. Typically, I recommend that a board not have more than three or four goals for a person in a year. That's not open meeting law, that's just, if you make too many goals, it doesn't work. It's kind of a general business practice. But that each of you would take the opportunity to send to the chair your identified goals that you'd like to see the board adopt, let the chair pull those together, because often there's a common theme among what people are interested in seeing a person work on, in this case, town manager. Let the chair kind of synthesize those, I'm more than happy to support the chair in trying to bring those into a cohesive set of statements that bring different viewpoints together. And then when you meet an open session, you have something to start from, right? So that the chair would present to the full board what this set of goals is, and then the board will deliberate on it. And it's like you do everything else, again, it's a board decision, so if the chair were to come up with something that didn't represent what any member of the board was interested in, then the proposed list is amended or not voted upon. But ultimately, what's important here, and what has not happened consistently in the past, excuse me, is these have to be board goals. It has to be a vote of the board to adopt a set of goals. And those goals become important, because at the end of the process, at the end of the evaluation year, that's what you're largely going to evaluate the town manager's performance on. So let me just look at my notes, see if there's anything that I wanted to make reference to that I didn't. Looks like I've covered everything I wanted to throw out as an introductory comment, but I'm happy to take questions from the board to clarify what I've said.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions of the board, comments or suggestions that anybody wants to mention or say, or?
So, based on what Mark has just stated, is it the intent that we should email you goals that we would like to discuss at the next meeting? Is that, is it at our next meeting, or we're going to be discussing goals?
We can be a little flexible on that. I think what we're saying is that each of us come up with three or four goals that we think are important to us, and I'll take a look at them with Mark, try to find something that's common, like if four of us have the same goal, then, you know, we'll talk about that. I'll present that to the board, we are discussion, and then that'll be our starting point.
And I should, I didn't say this, but I do think it's important that the board set some timelines on this, right? I mean, you're not just saying it'll happen whenever, you know, if you're going to take up this issue with the town manager and have the full discussion a month from now, my suggestion would be, everybody put their proposed goals together, get them to the chair, middle to end of next week, give them a little bit of time, and then you're ready to go.
So you're putting a pressure on me here, Mark.
I'm not picking the timeframe, I'm just outlining the process.
Let me ask the goal.
You guys can dictate the time.
If I may, I would say, yeah, next, next meeting would be kind of tight. You know, I haven't personally thought about it, and so it's going to take a while to sit down, write you an email, then get it to you, and I would think that a month, you know, by our second meeting, would be my opinion on that.
Tim, Robert, Amy, any other suggestions, or what do you think, Robert?
I could be incorrect about this, I was under the impression that we were required to do it by July. I don't have the time.
No, he's addressed that in his opening statement. You can address that.
Yeah, sure, the language in the contract does set July 1st as a goal. It also says that the failure to hit that goal doesn't constitute a breach of the agreement. And that was something, quite frankly, that was written recently, because the board was having a hard time hitting those, those goals, those, no pun intended, that deadline. And my understanding is the town manager is agreeable to pushing the deadline back a little bit to make this all work, because you haven't done it yet. And if you don't do it now, you know, it's going to be, you're going to be in a bit of a predicament to evaluate the town manager next May, I think is when you would do it. If you don't have goals to measure against, you know, you've kind of lost a year. So it does make reference to July 1st, but it's not, it's not a firm date, nothing really happens, that by virtue of the fact we're sitting here on the 5th, and you haven't done it yet.
I just let the board know, I had, had conversations with the town manager and town attorney regarding this, and everyone did agree. You're right, it said "shall," but we did address this upfront, and both parties agreed that we can handle it this way, so we're not in any trouble.
So you, the intent, just to review, is that we'll all email you our suggestions for goals, and then you'll consolidate them, and then we'll discuss them? Is that, am I understanding properly?
Yeah, I think that's accurate, and, but what I would like to get from the board, Dennis has given his input, how much time do we think we need for you guys to put your three or four goals together? And you guys can set the date, if you want. Dennis is saying two weeks, I guess, Dennis?
No.
In two, no, in two weeks. No, in two weeks, could you have your goals, I guess?
Yeah, give us, you know, that timeframe to get it to you, you know, we should have it to you within, you know, a couple of weeks.
By the next meeting?
Yeah, and definitely, and then.
Schedule a meeting after that to start having the initial discussion. How do you guys feel about that?
I mean, to be quite honest with you, this, to me, and I don't mean to offend the other board members, is not like a new issue. I've kind of been thinking about this for, you know, since I ran for election last time. What I would ask is, since we already have this on the agenda, I would like to hear from the manager, what the, what the, what sort of feedback from the manager as far as what reasonable goals would be. I mean, I, and I would like to, with the chair's permission, just kind of throw out a couple of things for the pleasure of the board and.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, before this particular item gets hijacked any further, I think what it says is goal-setting process, it's not determining what the goals are this evening, and I think you've put a good faith effort in reaching out to me to ask to extend this deadline, which is really fluid, based on mutual agreement, which we are doing. Normally, in, you know, prior years, the chairman will set the date with, with the board, if that's so agreeable, but sets a date into the future, and then actually provides the framework. We have some of the framework in generalities, but I'm sure that you will provide some information to the board on how to potentially set a goal, what are some other kinds of goals that other communities may have had, those kinds of things, and then actually put it forward in which the discussion of those goals will take place. Tonight is not the night to discuss the goals, and if town council would like to say that and to inform this particular board member that they want to hear from me about my goals, I would really appreciate it.
I was going to say, Mrs. Kelly, and beat me to the punch by about half a second.
Sorry.
The agenda is defined about the process, right? So that's what you have on the agenda, is discussion about the process, not the goals itself. So if we were to go further, my view is that that would be a violation of the open meeting law, to start getting into the substance of what those goals are. And so my advice to this board is that it not go down that pathway now, because that's not what's on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, reflecting, you know, the discussion, my concern would be, I think that we should just work our, work our best to try and comply with the July deadline. I look at it like we have at least another couple of weeks before the next meeting. I know some of the members are busy, you know. If, well, I can't, I can't say that. I was going to say I would help the other board members, but obviously, that's problematic. But that would be my recommendation, is that we push through to try and, to try and get this done on time, for the first time in, in some time.
Well, I, I think I understand what you're saying, and I think what I'm asking for is for the board members to give me a date where they feel comfortable, where they can submit their three or four goals. I think Dennis feels that we have a two-week lead time to do that, and I just want to know if the other members of the board feel that they are, that would give you enough time to set your goals, so I can look at them, I can review them, along with town council, and then come back to you in the last meeting, two meetings from now, okay? And we can start the conversation about the goals. Like, I can tell you what, you know, maybe five of us had goals of continue to get grants or whatever they are, okay? So I'll look at it that way. If five of us have the same thing, I think that's pretty, pretty indicative of that's a goal that we all think of. But that would start the process, so again, I'm just looking for input from the, from the board to see when you feel comfortable that you could get your, your three or four goals to me.
I have one question.
Sure.
So at... Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
It happens to the best of us.
What, what level of detail do you want in the goals? So if, I, I think what Robert's alluding to is that if there, if that it's a generalization of what the goal can be, rather than extremely specific, if we can move the timeline up because of that, you know, as a generalization versus a very detailed goal?
Yeah, I think this is really just a point from experience and seeing a lot of goals, and I serve on elected board myself, so I've drafted some of these for the person that I supervise. I, I think it's very hard to answer that question, because there can be specific things, there can be general things. I think the lens that, that I'd suggest the board use is really, what is your role, your policy setting body, right? And the town manager is the one responsible for doing the day-to-day. So you really should be talking about the policy-level goals that you're looking for, and I think that leans towards the more general. I don't know enough about what's going on in town to even have a clue as to what any of the five of you might suggest as a goal. You know, I, I can say that sometimes you see things like improved financial structures, or, you know, work on business development, increasing tax base, those are very broad statements, and I think that's probably the most common thing, sometimes there might be a, by doing the following. But generally speaking, you want to kind of operate at that policy level and say, "Look, this is what we want to see that will improve the town, and you figure out how to make it happen." If, I, I hope that helps, but it is, it's a hard question to answer. I don't, sorry, Mark, if you have any input on that?
No, I think, I think that's, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
I, I tend to agree, because again, given the role of the Board of Selectmen as the policy board, shaping the overall policy for the town, so rather than getting into specifics, I want to see, you know, this specific project more of, of, in a global sense, I think that would probably make it easier for you to come up with, with broader concepts, and then those, those are refined over time. But I, I think Labor Council has expressed it well, that you, you set that kind of umbrella policy in, in various areas, depending on what you see are the needs of the town overall.
I think with that being said, I don't think it's unreasonable to do it by the next meeting, considering if, if, if I'm understanding correctly, the portion of it, you know, is going to be to submit to you and then to discuss, so the detail is in the discussion, not necessarily in the presentation.
Good point.
To, to the chair.
Okay, with that said though, we would have to get him the goals by next week, so that you would have time to consolidate them all.
Well, that's what we're talking about, the date. I think Dennis feels that two weeks would be fine. Robert and Tim, what, what do you think, how much time do you think you would need to put together your goals?
I'm ready.
Could you do it in two weeks? Is that something?
Yeah, I could do it for tomorrow.
I don't think I could, you're younger than me, so.
But so, so, you know, part of my point that I was trying to bring up earlier is that I don't really like just kind of throwing out my goals without kind of the input from the other people, or the other board members, and even from the manager, because I would like the goals to be a little more specific, because I don't want it to be an opinion whether or not the manager met the goal. I would, I would like to give the manager the opportunity, it's quantifiable, I met this goal, it's not my personal opinion, it's, it was done. And so for that reason, my personal opinion is that goals should be, should be quantifiable in that way.
If I may, Mr. Chair? Yeah, I, I don't take the concept of general policy goal with attainable metrics as being opposed. I think there are certainly some goals that can be sort of general statements, so go back to the one I used before, because I hear this in a lot of smaller towns, we want to improve commercial tax base, right? That might be a broad statement, but the attainable goal for the year might be by 1%, by 2% or something like that. And so I think those two things can be brought together in a way that, you know, your goal is broad, but the, the measurement is a different piece than the goal itself, and is appropriate for discussion through this process.
So, to Robert's point, so let's just use your example, the goal is to improve business development in town. Could Robert put, or any of us put in our goal specifically, so we can measure it, as an increase of 3%?
Right.
We can do that upfront, though, right? They can put that in as part of their, as part of their goal. It was starting with a general goal, and then we're giving something, like he said, that we can measure, and say, "Yeah, we, you know, at the end of the term, when we evaluate, say, you know, Jen, we wanted 3%, you only did 2."
Right.
I, I could understand why that would be reasonable.
You know, and I'm giving the town manager harp palpitations over what that percentage should be.
No, no, it's all right.
Well, I, listen, we're just.
We're getting into the full discussion, it's fine.
No, well, no, we're talking in general terms here, okay? I think Robert brought up a good point, and I, I think we need to set some guidelines here as to what our goals are. I have the same question. You know, I, one of my goals, I said, would be bringing in more grant money.
All right, so let's not go into specific goals for anybody, right? But I think, to use the illustration, because I made, I made it up, I don't know what your goals will be. Having a proposed goal and a proposed metric.
Okay.
I think it's fair game for all five of you.
Okay.
And some people may have sort of just a proposed goal, and they're not sure how to measure it, and that's fine, too. That's going to be part of the process that the board will go through, and some of the input that it really needs to hear from the town manager. Because I know if I were sitting in your seat, I wouldn't know what's attainable using that example, but I bet the town manager does.
Okay.
And so, you know, to your, to your core question, is it appropriate to have metrics so you can figure out? Sure, absolutely. It's up to the board to decide collectively what that metric is going to be, or metrics are going to be. But as a part of this process, if you were to provide the chair with a goal statement and a proposed metric, I think that's perfectly appropriate, and you can try to synthesize all that together, hopefully reflecting some common views on the part of the board, then you come back and meet at your open session, you obtain the, the input of the town manager, and you hash it out, you come up with whatever the final wording is going to be.
Okay, so what I'm looking for is a date where we can, as a board, submit your goals to whatever degree. It can be general, you can put in something in there that we, can help us measure whether those goals are met or not, and it'll be a starting point, basically, for us to have our discussion. So I guess I'm asking the board members, could we do that within the next two weeks? Get me your, your goals?
Yes.
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm asking the board, that with, what's today's date, the 5th? By the 19th of July, you submit your goals in general form, and any specific metrics you want to put in to show that the town manager has met those goals, if you can send that to me, I'll take a look at them, I'll sit down with Mark, we'll evaluate them, we'll look at them to see if, how many of us, you know, we might have four of us that have the same goal, so that's going to pretty much eliminate that. I'll share that with the board, and we can have further discussion.
Share that to the board at the open meeting.
At the open meeting, yes.
Be clear on that. Open meeting law prohibits him from sharing, I'll call consolidated document, with anybody until the next meeting.
So, so if I got it by the 19th, should I say that we're going to have the open meeting on the last, what's the two, two weeks after that?
So August 2nd.
August 7th?
First meeting after the 19th.
Is that okay? I'll have your goals by two weeks, and then we'll bring it up, the August 7th meeting?
Second.
Second, sorry. I'll be able to discuss things with Mark, I'll be able to present something to the board, and we can have further discussion. How does that seem?
Mr. Chairman, I would like if we could at least carve out a small section of the next meeting, just to kind of air some of them out, just because I think it would be helpful for people, especially, you know, with the metrics, because I think it's really important that we kind of, that we all, we're all on the same page in that way, and I don't want to kind of drag out the process. You know, I, I look at it as we could start, start the discussion, and we don't have to finish at that meeting, just open the discussion, get it moving, and then I, in my opinion, that would be, we wind up with a better product at the end.
Dennis?
If I may, you're putting a lot of pressure on that guy, because now, again, that, that's why I did the two, give us a couple of weeks. I'll tell you right now, I'm not going to get it to him tomorrow like you, okay? I don't have him in my back pocket. It's going to take me a while. So to have a, to have him, he's got to do a, he's got to compile all these and then come up with a list of goals. He's not going to, he's not going to give us that meeting, I presume. Tell me if I'm wrong. He's not going to give you, say, okay, we've got 20 goals here, what are we going to discuss, right? He's going to narrow these down and say, these were the, were the kind of the five or six goals that were the commonalities, and then that's what we're going to talk about. So, you know, to, to give him time to do that, he can't do that next meeting.
If I could, just piggyback on that, the concept behind this is to allow the, the chair to have some information, just try to synthesize them, some points, common points ideally, but points generally, and then to bring that back to the board. If you're using that process, meeting before he's had an opportunity to synthesize, synthesize that, get help from me if he needs it in terms of putting that into better goal statements, you're, you're kind of putting the cart a little bit ahead of the horse. And, and so the conversation that I think will unfold in that scenario is one that ultimately, while permissible, is also one that's going to be counterproductive to the whole, because you're going to have the conversation when everybody else has just shipped off these written documents and nobody else has the benefit of it. Kind of undercuts the whole point of that process. So my suggestion to you is that you go with the process I outlined of everybody sharing their proposed goals, allow the chair to consolidate those into hopefully what will be something that the full board can say, yeah, we, that all makes sense, we're good with that. But then you, you're not going to be able to get there unless you give him some time to set that document together and present it to everybody for your, I guess, the August 2nd meeting.
Okay, so maybe I can take a straw poll. I think what we're looking for is to have goals by July 19th, so I can review them. So how does the board feel about that? Do you think that's a reasonable request? Have all your goals to me by July 19th?
I could do that.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to, just to press the point one last time. I don't know that, I don't understand kind of the fear, and maybe council can speak to this, of just kind of putting goals out there. I don't, I think we're all reasonable people here, and if somebody's goal is something that's not going to work, you just, hey, Selectmen King, that goal is not going to work.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, I may.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, first, I would object to the notion of fear.
Yeah.
First of all, I think the chairman has the role and has quite ably already demonstrated that he can put together an agenda, he can provide the board with necessary materials before you, you have an entire packet with all the agenda items for this evening. Tonight was really literally to just talk about the overall arching process with the expectation that the chairman will work with legal counsel to help guide even the next agenda item which would be eventually put on to actually, you know, define those goals for the manager. Certainly, I'm not someone who shies away from setting goals for this community. That's not the point. The point here is to allow the chairman to actually, you know, having done some preliminary discussion of the process, but with the intent that it become an actual agenda item, and I would quite respectfully be able to place that in the hands of the chairman, knowing that he has reviewed all of the agendas that get put together and make sure that the documents are provided for each member. So I would imagine that prior to that, you'll get some information from the chairman and from legal counsel potentially that will help you frame that and actually discuss it as a board as we go forward once the chairman, you know, puts that on the agenda, which is sounding like if someone makes a motion, it may be in August.
I just want to say for the public record, I take exception to the fact that there's any fear on going forward through this with any member of this board. This is something that the town previous, have not dealt with for over two years, and I've asked town council to come here tonight so we can directly deal with this issue according to the state law and our charter. And that's why Mark is here tonight, and that's why he's giving us his, his suggestion on how to do this. The way we've done it in the past, according to him, has not been the right way to do it. So I want to make that statement.
Yeah, and that, that is correct. And the process I'm suggesting to you, quite frankly, is no different than I've suggested to boards around the Commonwealth for 20 years. It doesn't mean you have to listen to me. I'm just telling you that procedurally, it works. It's a way that the valuation systems work, it's the way that goal setting, which is often tied into that. One valuation ends, the next is immediately moving into goals. So, you know, my advice is take it one step at a time. I think what you're doing is bringing the second step of the process into the first, and I think ultimately that is probably going to cloud the whole exercise to the point where it may be more difficult, and you're going to end up spending a lot of time wordsmithing and trying to figure out, well, what's really this, what's? You're going to have that discussion, but if, if you have somebody who's working on the document in a way that tries to frame it to address the multiple concerns that are raised, you're going to have a better, healthier conversation. It's going to lead to a better outcome and ultimately hopefully better goals and, you know, better ability of the town manager to meet those goals.
So what we're doing is starting, this is step one of the process. We'll eventually get to what Robert wants to talk about, was looking at step one. Do I have to get a, get a, make a motion that we accept this date, or can we just?
I think you need a consensus of the board. This isn't something that, you know, there's nothing in the employment agreement that necessarily requires a specific process. Usually this is a consensus item where people say, okay, yep, I can get it to you by that date, and this is the way we're going to go forward. So hopefully, and it sounds like you have consensus largely on the process, the timing is a little bit of an issue, and I understand some members want it to move more quickly. I'm certainly not opining on that.
All right, so I guess on what I'm asking the board, I'm looking for a consensus that, that all members of the board have their three or four goals to me by July 19th. Let's deal with that part first.
I can do that for you.
I can definitely do that.
Okay, Tim, okay. So that's what we're going to do. I appreciate Robert's comments. I think it's important that you address them, and I think we are finally dealing with something that hasn't been dealt with in a while, and we're doing it in a proper manner, and I'm looking forward to going over with the rest of the board with this and seeing what your comments are. Dennis?
Just a little side note, because I don't want to be accused or Amy accused of breaking the open meeting law. Anybody that was watching, her and I were having a little discussion with her tablet. We were discussing dates. That's all we were doing. So I want the general public and everybody to know that that's all we were doing, is discussing possible dates.
We have a calendar up.
I really didn't know that you two were dating. I, I just.
Oh, yes.
Yes, we were, you know.
That's a whole different. I hope Debbie knows what's going on. Well, thank you for that clarification. So let's go with the process, starting at July 19th, I'll have all the input and each have your three or four goals. It would be interesting if we all had the same three or four goals. I think it would make the process easier. And then what we'll do is the first meeting in August, we'll have a discussion. Mark, you probably can come back and help us do that to make sure where.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I think from the substantive discussion about what your goals are, that's really a board issue. I don't know.
Fine.
You need counsel there. You know, if you struggle with it, you can't get to an endpoint.
Okay.
I'm happy to come back.
Beautiful.
But I don't, you know, it wasn't my intention to do that. I don't, it shouldn't be neat. It's a, you know, operational question of what are you, what are you as a board saying these sort of things we want to have a comment?
I'm looking forward to working together on this and finally getting some goals, and as Robert said, hopefully we can put some matrix in there to be very specific and give Jen the direction that she needs and the goals that she needs. So, all right, so that concludes that, unless anyone else has any other comments, and I thank the board for their input. Next thing on the agenda, outdoor business permit for a fresh produce stand to be located at 28 Sutton Ave., requested by Dennis Walsh. Dennis Walsh has applied for an outdoor business permit to have fresh produce stand. The application states the produce would operate from July 1st, 2022 through October 10th, 2022 at 18 Sutton Avenue, which is Robbins Garden Center, with hours Monday through Sunday from 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM. Mr. Walsh has had a permit for this premise in the past, and the application has been attached. Unfortunately, Mr. Walsh was unable to attend tonight, but I would move that the board approve this outdoor business permit for the produce stand requested by Mr. Dennis Walsh. I'm looking for a motion.
I will make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a mo, a motion in a second. Any discussion of the board? Being none, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five. Any affirmative? Permit has been granted. Thank you. We have a request regarding Rule Field Basketball Courts. I think this is something that Tim has been following up on that, and appreciate him bringing that to the board's attention. So at this time, I would like DPW Director Javeduwal to come to here and give us some, and also Shelley Lambert from the Community Center Director to come up here and give us a little information as to what's going on with these backboards and maybe other recreational areas in town. So come on up. I think you.
Mr. Chairman, Shelley Lambert was not going to be available tonight. I think that was a misprint.
Okay.
I knew that she was going to be away on vacation, but I do see that Stacy White is here this evening.
Thank you, Stacy.
And prior to, I think, Director Duval and Assistant Program Director Stacy White speaking on this issue, it was raised as an issue that was brought to my attention through an email from Selectmen Moriarty, and I had expressed back that I did think it was timely to discuss it because we had a number of courts that were experiencing similar problems, and because of that, I had department heads that were already engaged in trying to address the problem. So with that, I know we've included some materials and some photographs, and I think if Director Duval, who is really encompassing oversight over all our properties in general, including our recreation facilities, I thought he would help lead the discussion, and then Stacy White could also provide some input for the board, in particular to some of the questions, I think, that were being raised by Selectmen Moriarty, but some that may have appeared on social media, and I think it's, it's important to hear from them about the issue first, and then we can.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Go first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this has been an ongoing issue. I think what the manager is alluding to at several of our courts, we're seeing vandalism is really one of the primary issues. Certainly at Rule Field, we're not just seeing it at the basketball courts, we're seeing it at the concession stand, frequent tagging, there's cameras on that concession stand, but yet it's still tagged. Outlets, exterior light, electrical outlets that are damaged frequently, siding, we see spray paint and tagging on the concrete slab patio there. The disc golf course that we recently completed, we've already been cleaning up tagging in, in vandalism in there several times. So that seems to be a hotbed in particular of vandalism and tagging, but it's happening all over at, at multiple recreational facilities, at the high school playground, all over, but but really Rule Field being one of the, the primary spots. So I, I think part of the issue, and people taking exception with the condition of those courts up there, it is something that's been discussed, particularly the asphalt surface. There's fairly large cracks in that asphalt. It's, it's several years old, decades old probably at this point. There has been discussions on my part with the Recreation Commission. We talk with them annually going into the capital planning process to see what their priorities are across all of the town's open space and recreational facilities. While there's been discussions about what could be done with those courts, it's never been listed as a top priority to include or to put forward in the capital plan. We had other things that have gone forward in FY '23, namely irrigation at Rule Field. We still are looking to at some point potentially replace the, the lights that I think date back to the 70s and the, the light poles. We also put in for security cameras as well, but that was not able to be funded just given the number of priorities across the DPW and other town departments as well. In my opinion, I, and what I'm committed to is really a collaborative approach in looking at Rule Field and how we can sort of thoughtfully make repairs and also look at how we program things up there, I think, to try to mitigate the vandalism, because I don't think it's a prudent use of funds. I mean, we could get out there the day after the social media post and, and work on replacing the backboards, right? But I don't think that's a prudent use of taxpayer monies to keep chasing these, these vandalism issues and spending upwards of $1,000 at least. I think Shelley noted in her memo, the actual cost for the backboards down at the center courts behind OCC was probably a couple thousand dollars at that point, if you can even get them, right? We're, we're dealing with extended lead times and that sort of thing. So I think, you know, a collaborative approach between DPW, the Community Center, the manager's office, the Recreation Commission in particular, and also the PD, which we do, we're talking on a regular basis, we're reviewing security footage to try to pinpoint who the culprits are in these cases. But we've made significant investment down at Rule Field, and, you know, I think really the, the priority needs to be in additional security measures. The security cameras, we did receive a cost upwards of $20,000 for upwards, I think it's almost 14 cameras to cover that whole property, to try to protect the investment that we're making up there. With regards to the courts, I mean, they're really too far gone to, to sort of patch or crack seal the asphalt that, that's there. You're looking at probably anywhere to, from, you know, by the time you rip out the asphalt there, regrade it, pave it, probably $50,000 in paving, given today's prices, and that's not to, you know, not including the, the basketball hoops, replacing those with a more modern basketball hoop. I think we still have only plywood backboards up there, so not, not to any modern sort of standard or built for longevity. There's also just, we, we did replace the fencing around that, those courts back in 2015, but it's only three-sided. So I think something that would be worth looking into in collaborating with the Recreation Commission on, maybe prioritizing a project to enclose those courts entirely with a, a gate and maybe a lock, and then work on sort of hours that those courts could be opened up to the public to try to, again, mitigate the chances of, of further vandalism. So happy to answer any of your questions in particular. That's just sort of a general overview from my perspective and from my experience revolving around the courts.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do want to ask, not ask, but ask the DPW Director, the reason why there are plywood backboards is not because the town has never made the investment. It's a town in the past, prior to even my coming, had made numerous investments repeatedly when the backboards were damaged. We, we included some pictures in here about what's happening right behind the Community Center despite some surveillance activity that we have, and you can see clear holes. And I apologize, I don't have a video presentation this evening, but in your packets, you can see the clear cracks and, and holes in the actual backboards, and Ms. Lambert had enumerated some of the problems that they've had that led to the demise of beautiful backboards that they had. So the plywood was put as a response after multiple times where the backboards were actually really ruined and spending money to put them up there, and that's where they have been since that time, but it wasn't the first choice of the town in terms of investment. I just want people to know that.
So would the board like to communicate with Jared now, or let Stacy make her statement and then go from there? What's the pleasure of the board? Tim, you brought this up.
I'll have questions. I mean, I can, I can do something now.
Maybe we should let Shelley go first, because she might answer Stacy.
I'm finding a way.
I'm sorry, Stacy. I apologize.
Shelley's on vacation.
I'm finding a way.
Basically repeat what Jared said, that it is costly to keep replacing things that continually get vandalized. So we did replace those two backboards behind the Community Center that are shown in these pictures with the holes, and the cost of that replacement for two was $2,639. I don't think that the town is prepared to replace all four up at Rule Field right now and put them in a position where they'll continue to get vandalized, even though recreation, I believe, is vital to any town. So I would like to see us come up with some sort of solution to make reparations, but also to protect those repairs.
Thanks, Stacy. All right, let's open it up for discussion. Tim?
So I, I've actually been reached out by individuals, and, and I saw it on the, the town forum on Facebook, and a lot of people not just expressed concern that they were in disarray, but they wanted to do something to help, not just place it on the town or the rest of the taxpayers. So I guess my question is, is what can individuals or businesses do in a situation like this? Like if we had an offer from an individual or a company or, or a combination of both to replace the backboards at, at no cost to the town? You know, I don't, I don't know the legalities of, of how that would go, but a, a lot of people have expressed the concern that, and the willingness to do this. You know, I met with somebody at the courts who, who does paving, local in town, and, you know, he discussed ways that he could do it. Now, now I do understand the graffiti, and I, and I understand that coming, you know, with a large price tag on some of these things. I, I just think that there's other ways that we can do this with reaching out to the community, and I think they're, they're very eager to help and just looking for an avenue to do it. So I guess I'm just asking, is, is there an avenue right now where businesses can, at, at zero cost of the town, either take donations individually or as a business to, to do, and not just, you know, specific to the backboards at Rule Field, but and anything else that, that wants to be done?
to be done? I just find that we, you know, we bring things to vote and, you know, the people that really were eager to put their tax dollars into these things are not getting that opportunity to do it. So, I just think, you know, maybe on some of the larger items that we can't do, you know, certainly wouldn't be asking the community outside of it to do that. But if they're eager, you know, I understand that they can be expensive and maybe there's other options. And certainly materials that won't get, you know, as vandalized, maybe there's a coating that can be put on, you know, to where it's easier to get off. But either way, I don't think it has to be a major thing to get the funding. I think we can look to the community, you know, that they've presented and see where we can go with it.
Thank you, Tim. Jared?
Sure. I mean, I've not been approached personally by anyone looking to volunteer. And I think, in my opinion, quite frankly, I think that's a little bit of a slippery slope. When you're looking at taxpayer dollars, you're looking at, you know, the estimate that I generated, you know, order of magnitude, but to pave that up there, you're looking at, again, over $50,000. As a municipality, we're subject to a lot of regulations, procurement regulations, prevailing wage law, a lot of things that, they're kind of constraints on us, but for good reason, right? We're trying to ensure that the town is getting the best value. We're trying to ensure fair competition and a whole slew of other things. So, I, you know, I tell people a lot of times when we look at things like this and it's like, why aren't we thinking outside the box? Well, we're a municipality, right? So, we have to kind of think to the edges of the box because those laws and regulations are there for a purpose, right? So, you know, if we're looking at, let's say, the paving, you said you talked to a paving company up there. I mean, I just can't imagine, given the cost of materials today, that a paving company is going to want to donate, you know, $50,000 worth of paving or so. It just seems unlikely to me. So, and if that's the case, and then I don't know if a company is willing to donate their labor, but again, there's prevailing wage law implications there, doing public works for the town, there's insurance implications, there's bonding implications. So, these are all things that, and it's not just here, this is everywhere. This is why, you know, a lot of municipalities, I think you're seeing the same sort of thing. They're contracting out this work and that's just, it's the cost of doing business for a municipality. And we want to ensure quality standards are met too. You know, a lot of times for paving work, let's say we have pre-qualifications through Mastod, I mean, it'd be great to go down the street, you know, Joe's Paving Company because they're local, but procurement law doesn't really care necessarily about the local company. It's really just about best value, best quality, responsiveness and responsible bidders, you know, for public works. So, I mean, that's just, you know, my perspective on it. You know, if you're talking about a smaller scale project, certainly, if we're talking about planting a couple of trees, something like that, I can, I can see that would be more viable. But for something like, you know, the courts up at Rule Field, I think you're looking at really a capital, it's a capital project, you know, capital improvement project that I think needs to be on the town's capital plan and then kind of hired out to the most capable bidders in accordance with mass procurement law.
Can I follow up on something though?
Sure.
To Tim's point, what if we organized a fundraiser? And I don't know how you'd go about this, but, all right, it's difficult to have someone come do the work. I think we all understand the laws and that. But why couldn't we get a fundraiser and, you know, this is going to be to make, to buy $20,000 worth of cameras or to, you know, raise money to put up new backboards or new lighting? I mean, that's something we could certainly do as a town, right?
I don't know the ins and outs in particular for donations and that sort of thing, but...
Well, Jen, do you know the ins and outs?
I defer to legal counsel. I have some ideas of what you can and cannot do, but I think you should hear it from me.
Well, I think it's important that we look at all options. I know that we've had things in the past where people wanted certain, I mean, listen, that whole area down there was done 50 years ago by volunteers. People would go in the afternoon, you know, they donate equipment. The laws, the laws were different then, okay? And unfortunately, basically, the laws that we've enacted have kind of screwed us, to be honest with you on that. But I would certainly like to look into, with your permission, is maybe getting some kind of a fundraiser and maybe you can give the first donation.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, obviously, I don't give you permission.
All right, all right, okay.
But I mean, I think this is an excellent discussion and the kind of discussion that many municipalities have. There are certain, there are statutes that, for better force, I like Jared's point about operating within the box instead of outside the box. Obviously, you've got two attorneys here, you're strictly governed.
You're going to be on a box.
The box is pretty, is pretty well sealed up. But that being said, there is room inside the box and I think, Slough Moriarty has brought up some interesting ideas. I think the days of having volunteers coming in and building your facility are pretty much over. You have a lot of potential liability issues when you allow, and believe I know of towns that do this on certain small scales, and some of them, they don't want to listen to me and they will do it on a larger scale. And you run, you run a risk not only of the job being done wrong, not being done on time, not being done completely, but the possibility that somebody could be harmed at a facility and issues that arise with that. And we have, we have the recreational use statute that protects us to a certain extent, but we do have to be careful in how things are designed and built. Then you get into whether you're using town funds and town oversight. The town can accept gifts and gifts of both money and goods. Chapter 44, Section 53A allows you to accept funds and those could be expended at the direction, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen without further appropriation. So, if somebody gave, wrote a check, a specific check that said $50,000 for the playground upgrade, and so it was a specific donation, then it could be accepted by the town, it could only be expended for that purpose with the approval of the Board of Selectmen and it wouldn't be subject to appropriation, it would go into the town's general fund. If I wrote a check that simply said gift to the town of Oxford, that would go into the general fund because it's not a specific donation. You can't spend it for a specific purpose because that purpose hasn't been specified. Chapter 44, Section 53A and one half, this is the box, you can see the boxes, these are the walls. So, 44, 53A and a half allows the town to accept goods. So, if somebody said, I want to donate backboards, that again could be done and the gift would be accepted with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. The reason obviously you have that approval process is there are going to be times when somebody might want you, to give you a gift that you don't want to accept. A specified gift that specifies a purpose that could be illegal or against public policy or against a general policy determined by the town through its Board of Selectmen. So, that's the overarching policy determination by the board. So, those gifts can be accepted. There are limited, there's a limited ability to do fundraising. Very often, we see that taken on, on the private side. So, private individuals undertake a fundraising for a municipality and then donate the proceeds of that because they are less constrained as individuals. But there are certain restrictions depending on who's undertaking the fundraising, whether it's individuals just on a volunteer basis as opposed to corporate donors. But there are, there is the ability of the town to undertake fundraising process provided that it's not coercive, it's not tied to use of town resources, or you can't direct Jared to go out and solicit while he's on town time. He's got a job to do, his job is not to go out and do that fundraising. You can't tie a permit, you can't say to someone who's coming in to build a house to say, well, if you're building a house before we're going to give you the building permit, you've got to give us $1,000 towards Rule Field. That, that, that kind of coercive aspect, you can't, you can't undertake. You can't undertake a situation where it appears that you are leveraging obligations of the town off of payments from contractors or individuals. So, there are limits, there are ethical requirements and there are limitations, but there are ways to do it. But like I said, generally, we see private individuals, private individuals want to write checks and submit them to the town, especially if they are targeted checks. Again, if that, the notation on the check says for the basketball courts, then you could, with the approval of Board of Selectmen, you could expend that. And then obviously, the work would have to be undertaken. Once that money is received by the town, even though it was a private donation, it becomes money of the town and it has to be expended in accordance with law. So, to construct a basketball court, as Jared mentioned, we're subject to the procurement rules with respect to construction of public works. So, public works, that's Chapter 30, Section 39M, a whole process depending on the cost and depending on the work. And then you have certainly prevailing wage law. And if you're going to put up a building, you get into even more significant procurement procedures, but it's a procedure for everything. So, but that being said, there are mechanisms that could be explored if that's what the town chooses to do.
Jen?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you to both the members and the public, actually adhering to this particular statute was something that was codified by this particular manager's office in making sure that whether it was a donation that was outright in cash for a specific purpose and outlining that purpose was being made, the statute was being referenced in those motions and/or if there's both an in-kind or non-monetary donation and costing that out for the board to actually properly accept it on behalf of the town. Now, there are many ways to look at this through our past agendas where you will see people and companies that have given money to the town and this board has accepted it by citing those statutes as long as I've been here. We've had donations that have come in to help people with fuel heating that has been worked specifically through the senior center for outreach to those in need. We have accepted donations relative to a flagpole on the common where it was constructed and done entirely by the individual, but the overall cost associated with that in-kind contribution was outlined in the board, accepted it on behalf of the town. So, we do this routinely. What happens sometimes is some people will make a cash donation and it's nowhere near what the amount is that would be required for, one, the professional staff to engage and think about replacing something. It could be, you know, a whole revamping of Rule Field's basketball court. It could be to change the basketball court to a volleyball court with the, and we would obviously want to talk about that with another board that oversees recreational programming, and that's the Recreation Commission, not just the Board of Selectmen. So, lots of moving parts. We do accept, and I love to ask people if they have something that they want to donate, I will bring it gladly before the Board of Selectmen to accept. But we have another form of very effective, not donation, but grant money that helps us do the kinds of boxing that we're allowed to do as professionals. And sometimes that is much more productive because of the amount and the scope that we put together and do something. We had somebody who wanted to do the actual bandstand handicap ramp. And originally, they were getting some grant money and they thought, well, they'll be in charge of the actual, you know, creation and construction. And that was not going to happen because our DPW director is in charge of overseeing the engineering and the actual construction. So, we gladly accepted, you know, the funding in order to get it done, but we used our professional staff to do it. That way, we're indemnifying, you know, any individuals, we're making sure we keep it within the most cost-effective parameters that we can. And we also make sure that, you know, we have a project that's going to last. So, you know, we do that routinely for maybe some, you know, new board members, it's an exciting time to think about how perhaps they can help do those kinds of things. And some board members in the past, I'm sure, came onto this board with long legacies of working to develop different kinds of donation avenues for the town. We have, you know, some other prospects on the horizon with other organizations that may want to donate to the town. And this board will have to determine whether they want to accept those donations, you know, going forward. So, but we certainly will bring them, but again, there are some parameters, I think, that have been adequately outlined by legal counsel, our DPW director, to try to stay in that kind of confine. And we finally, we do get donations that are not enough, that actually sit waiting, you know, for a time period in which other donations may come in to make it viable, but we don't get to spend it if it's delineated for a particular type of project. And sometimes we have things that sit for a long time because perhaps there was no further interest, but it was interest of the one individual. And we have to, you know, look at those kinds of things over the long run and figure out what do you do with those kinds of things, but...
Thank you, Jen. Any other questions or comments? Sure, Rob.
Yes, just quickly to Mr. Jared Duvall. It was my understanding that at FinCom, it was actually brought forward to do paving at Rule Field in the capital plan. Was that not these courts? Was that another area?
That was the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. And my other comment I wanted to make, kind of speaking to what Slough Moriarty had said is, so we have this problem that in some of these places we have cameras, but my understanding was that we don't have the staff to like be sitting there watching the cameras. And it's also my understanding that we, there's actually already a publicly accessible camera for Bird's Nest at Greenbrier, I believe. And so, I was wondering if we could crowdsource the viewing of the security cameras, if there's no sound, I don't see any reason why that would be an issue. And then if people happen to have it open, a lot of people listen to their police scanners just all the time, people happen to have it open, they see something kind of screwy going on on any of those cameras, they could call the police. It makes it more manageable so that the managers don't have to try and appropriate for staff to try and review thousands of hours of footage to figure out when something happened.
I would have an issue with that. These are juveniles we're talking about. There's a whole law around when you can see a juvenile doing things and who has the rights to those pictures?
This would be public. It's, there's no law about...
I understand that. So, Joe Schmo sees, I don't know, Chris Everett's kid.
Really, really?
All right, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, absolutely not.
All right, sees my kid, sees my kid.
Okay. Let's have proper order here. I would, I would ask all members to go through the chair before we make our comments.
I'm sorry.
I think the meeting has been very civil and this is the type of meeting that we need to have moving forward. So, Robert, are you finished with your comment right now or...
No, just to kind of speak to Amy's concerns.
Well, hold on a second. Have you finished voicing?
I think he understands my concern, right?
Yeah, I just, I just, do you have anything further?
Through the chair, please.
Through the chair.
Talk to me.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Robert.
So, there's already cameras that view large public spaces that are accessible over the internet to view, so I don't really see how that would be a legal concern that you would see, that you might see a minor. You know, if I pull out my camera and I'm taking pictures on Sutton Avenue, I'm not going to get arrested if there happens to be a minor in the picture. So, I don't know that that's necessarily a concern, not to mention, if you've ever looked at security cameras like this, the resolution is such that positively identifying an individual could be somewhat difficult. So, it's more just, it would give Oxford Police Department the ability that if something was ongoing, they could, they could possibly go down there if they didn't already have things they were tending to.
So, you guys are going to get, we're going to get our money's worth out of you tonight. Do you have any comment about Amy's concern and Robert's question? I mean, if we did this, would be violating any law or... Again...
Jump into the breach there?
Well, I certainly, this is a little bit off topic from where we started, so I'm a little concerned about getting too far into a civil rights discussion.
Understood, understood, okay.
So, I think that that's something that would have to be looked at depending on, you know, what the intent of the camera was, what, you know, how it's established, allowing general public access to a town camera generally is not done. I understand the concept that anyone can view anything, that's not entirely correct in the sense that, you know, you can't just record anything just because you happen to be out on the street. And the concern here is you're talking about essentially surveillance cameras owned by the town and making that available to the public. There are, there are issues. And then if it's true that the resolution is that poor, then I kind of question the value of the observation. But I think that's something that really we're heading, we're heading pretty far off.
I guess what I'm trying to set is an environment here where people can bring up a suggestion.
It's something that could be reviewed.
Or a comment without people attacking one another or getting upset with one another. Because I've always been a proponent of what's called brainstorming, you know, someone might have an idea, might not, but then down the road, you come up with a solution. So, I do want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity, that we treat one another civilly, and I think at the end of the day, we're all going to benefit. So, I appreciate Robert's comment, I appreciate Amy's concern, and if we need to deal with this at a later date, we can certainly put it on the agenda if that's what the board pleases.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, you can.
Please. This eats at my heart a little bit as maybe people in the audience, though I know a few of you know, is that I was instrumental in building the new animal shelter at a cost of $0 to the town. That was done with quite a group of individuals. We had a committee, we had a, the committee had a, what's that, tax-free, a...
501(c)(3).
501(c)(3). So, we were able to raise the money. We built a half a million dollar facility. It cost the committee, I think we ended up spending in the vicinity of $100,000. And of course, that's way back when. And a very well-needed facility. Then I got involved with Rule Field also. My company, we volunteered to build that. That was taxpayer money. There were other people in the town, again, that came forward and helped us and we donated our time. The one thing that bothers me is that you're talking about vandalism. That's a, that's a family issue as far as I'm concerned. Any individual that has a son or daughter that is doing destruction like that comes right back to the family. It's the family that, you know, what are you bringing up? What are you doing? This is our town. A lot of money is invested in recreation. We spent a lot of time, a lot of money on that. We put cameras, I thought they were going to be, they were, I'm not a technology guy. I know I've got cameras at my house, they work great because my son-in-law is the go-to guy. He could find a dime on that floor for crying out loud with the cameras he got. So, I don't understand that. It really bothers me that that's being destroyed because, again, it's a personal thing and it's personal to people that were there with me doing that work. And it does surprise me that I'm fortunate with the family I have that I don't have anybody in that. with the family I have that I don't have anybody in that. But those out there in this community, if you've got somebody like that, you've got to do something, you know? And it's not the general public. It's not, you know, the Joe Q neighbor, I think,'s responsibility to call the police. You can call the police and say, yeah, somebody's there. But, you know, it's the home. It's the home. And something has to be done there. Otherwise, we're never going to get rid of this. This is going to happen over and over and over and over. And so, I just wanted to say, it bothers me a lot.
I think it bothers all of us. I think that's why Tim brought this up. I think why Robert's made his, we're all trying to find a solution to the problem. And to me, if I read this, and Tim, if you don't mind I say this, it seems like we need to start with getting cameras down there. So, we can look at it and determine who, I took a ride by there just before the meeting because I knew we had done, and I looked at all the courts and stuff. And there were two kids climbing up on the backboard. And one kid jumped on the rim. And I stopped. And I said, what are you doing? Can't you shoot from the ground? And the kid gave me the old Larry Glick salute. And then I moved on. Okay? So, this is what we're dealing with. But maybe what we should do, Kim, with your permission, maybe we get a fundraiser to get cameras. Seems to me that that might be something that might solve the problem long-term, whether we develop a fundraiser or whatever, get a grant, whatever we got to do, start from there. And that's just my suggestion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that. Tim, how do you feel about that?
I'm not saying that camera, you know, Selectman King had brought up a good point that we don't know what the resolution is, you know. I'm no camera expert.
Absolutely, yeah.
Maybe it's a question that could be asked. Maybe it doesn't need anything, you know, large formally to be done. Maybe just a simple question to a professional that can answer that.
Okay.
But remembering back to when I was a kid, typically when there wasn't anything going on that day, or there wasn't any structure, I made my own things to do, you know? And sometimes you get in trouble from the neighbor for, you know, maybe throwing something in their part of the pond or whatever, and they don't like it, you know? But I think we can, you know, in the military, we call it policing your own, you know? So, if you see somebody doing something wrong, you know, try and say something. But again, to your point, Dennis, I don't, it's not really the responsibility of the townspeople, you know? But at the same time, we can't, we can't not do something to improve these things just because we don't have these cameras in place. I think if we give these people, they're going to these places specifically. If there's no backboards, you know, or no hoops, or they're not usable, then they may resort to just spraying everything. Now, I'm not saying that's why they do it. I'm just saying that, you know, if something's brand-new, I would hope that it would be less likely to be vandalized. But, you know, obviously, that's not the case.
It's not, no.
But what, I guess what I'm saying is, what can we do to further do these things without being at the burden of the vandalism? I think it's just a conversation that should be, I know it's already been started, but I think we should expand on it.
It's not a public hearing, guys. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I can actually address a couple things. First, I know there were comments this evening about actual surveillance and crowdsourcing surveillance. I would gather that my, our police chief would have a certain amount of perspective on this. We do not, as a general rule, as a municipality, survey people intentionally, proactively, to see if something is going to happen. Having said that, our, you know, our cameras that are located in municipal areas are wired into the police department. They are on our network. There's no future of, you know, allowing the public to get on our network to look at surveillance. First of all, the public is not empowered in that direction. Our law enforcement and our community facilities are. We don't sit as a municipality and have staff, you know, looking at cameras all day to even attempt to see if there's something wrong. There are a lot of things that you cannot do, and there are laws that specify that. Having said that, I know the conversation has gone quite wide. You know, there are those people who would say, we're actually in the process, once again, in an area that, you know, may have had some camera activity. You know, law enforcement does look at every lead, tries to establish that, and tries to work nine times out of 10 with the minors that are involved with that, which has the broader implications, I think, that have been raised by some staff, I mean, some board members here. In general, I think there are things and activities that take place to try to prevent that from happening. We are going to replace the backboards at the community center after beautiful, brand-new ones had been replaced not that long ago. So, you know, the notion of, you know, do we put cage around the basketball court and rent it out, or sign people up, not necessarily to rent, but sign people up like we do for the fields at Rural Field, that would be something that, you know, could be something in the future that would actually, hopefully, help that more and not just leave things unattended. So, you'll know what's happening at what specific time. Is it more onerous on staff to do that? Absolutely. Is it less accessible until you actually ask to go to the courts and go through the proper channels? Yeah. But we have a lot of things that are like that. It's interesting because the courts, where most people are using it from out of town, the ones right next to the North Fire Station, we don't have that same problem as much. And it could be because, you know, the fire station's there, the actual baseball fields are there, and maybe more people in the dog, the dog park. And so, there's a lot more activity of people there. And the fields could be when they're not being used, there's not as much activity. There's a lot of theories. But I think, you know, I will definitely raise this with our police chief and have some more discussion with the department heads involved, see if we can get back to you about some of our thoughts about some of the comments that have been made and what might be determinable. Obviously, we'd also be talking with the Recreation Commission and the like. But I thought, in general, the discussion about Rural Fields, it's important to set some context and perspective about what has happened thus far, even before I came, and why it looks the way it is. And no one person gets to make that decision. It's been sort of a town and departmental decisions that have gone along hand in glove with what's happened there over time. So, I think we, you know, are on a good pathway to maybe explore some more, get back to the board with some of the ideas and some of the follow-up of this discussion, obviously, with the police.
I can tell you, Jen, excuse me, one reason why there's not the vandalism up in North Oxford, there's a person that lives there. And he keeps an eye on, no, he does. He's been doing this for years, since I was a kid. And, yeah, you're right. And he sees any nonsense, he calls the police.
Calls the police, yep.
Something kind of what Dennis said, you know, if you see something, call, you know? Any other discussion about this? I think it's important that Tim brought this up. And I think we've had a healthy discussion. And I appreciate Jared and Stacy's comment. And if there's no other discussion, we can move on to the next agenda. Yes, Rob?
I just have, just very quickly, I don't want to beat the horse to death.
We've got time.
Just a suggestion for Mr. Jared Duvall. So, I had seen the estimates, and I think maybe you brought them up here, that the cost for the camera systems was somewhat extraordinary. And just from my own experience, there's a lot of wireless options now to charge and communicate through cellular plans that, you know, it may be something to consider if you haven't already, as a quicker solution that could be installed much faster at a much lower cost to the town.
You can look into that, Jared, would that be something?
Sure, point, well taken, yeah.
All right. So, you'll look into that and kind of give us a...
Yeah. The issue there, we don't have, there's no Wi-Fi. There's no Internet connection up there. So, it kind of limits what we're able to do. And the goal has been, I think, with our security network is consolidation to getting it on the same network. I mean, we have all of our cameras virtually, with the exception of Rural Field, on one platform right now. So, you can pull that up myself, and then, you know, obviously select people at the PD and look at the cameras across the town. So, if that was an option, to be able to tie it into that network, because I think there's certainly a lot of value to doing that, rather than doing, you know, just getting the cheapest option, we'll investigate all options.
All right. A lot of good suggestions, and maybe we've made some headway. We probably haven't solved the problem. But we're certainly aware of it, and we'd appreciate you looking into it. And at some point, let us know what you're coming up with. All right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is the board all set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, and I want to preface this by saying something. We are a young board, not age-wise, but in experience. We have three new members. I am a new chairman. We're finding our own personality. We're finding our own way. But I think it's very important that we all know what our function is, and what our job is, and what we can do and what we can't do as a selectman, as a town manager, and as a chairman of the board. And we also need to understand how we can re-interact with our town employees, whether the department heads or staff in general. And I think this type of meeting probably should have happened several years ago. Because I've asked town council, and this is why I've asked them to come here tonight. I want them to give us our opinion on those responsibilities that we each have, based on the state law and our charter. And I think sometimes people have a misconception as to what our jobs are. And I think it can cause some stress among the board. And I think it's needless. So, at this point, I would like Mark and Mark to kind of give us a little summary or a little seminar as to what our jobs are and how we need to interact with one another and how we need to interact with our staff and our citizens. And hopefully, this might clear up some of the misgivings that we have. I can tell you, as chairman, I have spent a great deal of time looking at the open meeting law, our charter. And I've spent a great deal of time talking with town council as to what my responsibility is as a chairman and how much leeway I have. And I think it's important that people understand that. And I'm going to turn the meeting over at this time to Mark and Mark so they can kind of help us out with this. So, Mark, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll start. This is, this is a very broad, but very interesting topic. And it's something that comes up in municipalities across the Commonwealth. The issue of, you know, how a municipality is governed, what the governance structure is, what the authorities are of the various entities within that town structure. We've been talking a lot tonight about boxes and about structure. And this one really is central to the concept of structure within the Commonwealth. And so, as you can imagine, the process runs from the basic framework of law. You have, you know, the Constitution of the Commonwealth as the overarching document. And then, you have state statute. Then, you have, on the same level of state statute, you've got the town charter, which is essentially a special act of the legislature. So, it has basically equal status to a statute. Then, you have the town's bylaws. And then, you have rules and regulations of various bodies. You also have rules and regulations of state entities that inform what certain town bodies can and cannot do. Trying to keep this as focused as possible, looking at the major players with respect to the authority of the town and how the town functions. As you all know, we have, we have a town meeting form of government, meaning that you have a town meeting that gathers in Oxford at least twice a year. So, you have your two annual town meetings. And then, you have special town meetings as necessary. And town meeting functions to appropriate funds, so establishes the budget, appropriates money for various items, such as cameras that we talked about, or equipment, tractors, material items such as that. So, budgeting and funding. And then, town meeting also legislates, so approves proposed amendments to the town's bylaws, be they the general bylaws or the zoning bylaws, acceptance of state statute as necessary, sometimes revocation of state statute. So, specific areas of town governance. Then, you have the select board, you folks. And that process is governed by your, and the authority of that board is governed by your charter, but also by state statute. So, when we look at the charter, the charter will essentially define the role of the board of selectmen. But before we even get to what the charter, what the charter talks about, we look at, you know, what is a board generally and how does a board function? Because a lot of, a lot of new, and we'll get, we'll keep it to the board of selectmen, although this is, this is an issue that comes up in other boards as well. But what is, what is my role now that I've been elected to a board? What do I, what can I and can't I do? And when you look at statute, and this is just a small sampling of municipal law, this is municipal finance. But when you look at statutes, statutes talk about boards and actions by the board. You know, a few examples. Chapter 39, Section 10, which governs the town meeting process, speaks specifically about how a warrant is issued under the hand of the board. The board of selectmen issues the warrant and has control of the warrant. Chapter 40, Section 3, talks about how the town generally holds real property, but that the board of selectmen may let or lease a portion of a town building for a period of up to 30 years without further authorization by town meeting. So, that gives a specific authority to the board of selectmen. Then, you have Chapter 59, Section 21(c), which is Prop. 2 and 1/2, that talks about, interestingly, in that case, the appropriating body of the town is defined as the board of selectmen, not town meeting. And it causes a lot of confusion. So, that's a situation where the board of selectmen would actually vote to determine whether a proposition to and a half override or a dead exclusion is going to be placed on a town ballot. So, those are just a few examples. Chapter 40, Section 14, that talks about, you know, sale of property and involves the board of selectmen. There are a number of areas where the board of selectmen is referenced and the authority of the board of selectmen. Then, we look into the open meeting law. And the open meeting law talks about how the public bodies are subject to meeting requirements based upon a meeting of a quorum of the board. And specifically talks about a quorum. So, you must have a quorum in order for the board to act. And that the only thing that a less-than-a-quorum could do, much like town meeting, is less-than-a-quorum can adjourn a meeting, but a quorum is required to take action. It's in the open meeting law that we see, we see a reference to the authority of a specific member of the board of selectmen, which is the chairman, talks about the authority of the chairman to determine who gets to speak at a selectmen's meeting, and authority with respect to what goes on the agenda. But in generally, through hundreds of statutes, and this all dates back really, really to essentially colonial days, when the authority of government was established, that the rule, the rule is that actions of the town, the town's executive body, have to be undertaken through that body. And the reason, of course, is because each of you are elected with your own intentions, your own platforms, your own ideas. You come to the board with your perspectives. We always hear people say, oh, you know, members of boards should come in impartial and without, and they should take everything new and not have a perspective. You hear that mostly with the adjudicatory bodies. And sometimes, you know, you will sit in that role. But it's more often when you're talking about the zoning boards and the decisions they have to make, or the board of health and decisions they have to make. But there are times when you might undertake, such as a licensing body, you'll undertake certain quasi-adjudicatory procedures. And so, even though there's the idea that you'll come into those procedures with a level of impartiality, you also know that you got elected for a reason. You had a platform. You had a perspective. People knew you ran for a reason. People elected you for a reason. You bring that reasoning. It informs the process and the decisions that you make. So, nobody's telling you you have to leave those decisions outside the door. But just as you have your own particular position that you've brought to the board, you have to, whether you like it or not, you have to understand that your fellow, you're going to be one person on the board, you've got four other individuals who ran on their platforms. Each one of you has your own perspective, your own opinion, your own intentions of what is best for the town of Oxford. So, at the end of the day, when a decision is made, the reason that the statutes talk about under the hand of the selectman or by action of the selectman and not by action of individuals, it's because each one of your perspectives may be different. But ultimately, you've been elected as a body to make those decisions for the town. You haven't been elected as individuals to make individual decisions. You've been elected to represent your position. And you're elected town-wide. You're not, you're not district councillors. You're not, you don't have a true constituency. Your constituency is the town. You're here to represent the best interests of the town. All of you have been elected equally, and all of you serve equally, but for certain designated authorities that flow from essentially the... designated authorities that flow from essentially the open meeting law to the chair. We could talk about that a little bit more, because I know that's a hot topic. But in general, I think it has to be recognized that board members act as a board. And individual members of the board are individuals. They essentially have the authority of any other resident. So when you're not acting in this manner at a board, unless the board has delegated something to you, the board can vote to say, one board member shall be tasked with this fact-finding, or this effort to then bring it back to the board for a final decision. And in fact, the open meeting law recognizes that if one individual acts on their own, two individuals charged with authority become a subcommittee of the board. And so if two individuals are charged with specific authority granted through the board, and that authority is within the scope or the jurisdiction of the board, those two members are now a subcommittee, subject to the requirements of the open meeting law. Meaning that even if it's two members, less than a quorum, you're still subject to posting and holding a public meeting. It becomes essentially, it's the same as any other public body, or a subcommittee. And if the board appointed, say, private individuals to undertake, and I think some of this was covered in the recent open meeting law training, but if the board empowers individuals, what the open meeting law talks about is that a public body, regardless of how constituted, is subject to the open meeting law. So if a body, such as the Board of Selectmen, appoints another body to undertake certain tasks, that other body, because the Board of Selectmen is subject to the open meeting law, would itself be subject to the open meeting law. Town manager is not subject to the open meeting law. So if the town manager appoints staff members to undertake certain duties, they don't have to operate subject to the open meeting law, because they report to the town manager, and the town manager reports to you. But that gets us to the next point, and then we're going to ping pong back and forth a little bit. But we just talked about how the board operates as a board. And under your charter, Section 3 of the charter talks about how you are a policymaking board. Notwithstanding the fact that the bylaws of the town and the charter allude to executive authority of the Board of Selectmen, that executive authority is then acted upon by and through a town manager. That's the way your form of government is established. So you have this executive authority to set executive policy. But the actual day-to-day functioning of the town is the charge of the town's chief administrative officer. And under your charter, the chief administrative officer is your town manager. So the town manager has the oversight of departments and personnel within those departments. So the board does not direct, say, you know, Mr. DeVallo was just up earlier, the board may have suggestions and may give a policy directive and try to provide, as we talk about, policy guidance. But ultimately, the day-to-day function, the dos and the don'ts of what you're doing on the streets and in town hall, that comes through a town manager. And different towns have different procedures. I represent some towns that have no administrative person. They're small towns, three-member boards, and no town administrator, no town manager. I have some that have executive secretaries, and that's becoming fewer and fewer, some that have a town coordinator. And so they have less and less authority. And many of those, they don't have a charter. So it falls upon the Board of Selectmen to undertake those day-to-day activities. And believe me, their jobs are very difficult, even though they're small towns, because they are actually undertaking those day-to-day authorities. But as a town grows in size and complexity and sometimes sophistication, that's when you see charters that define those roles more specifically. And it's intended to avoid a situation, again, where individual perspectives guide the board. You, as a board, make those policy determinations, you hand that off to the town manager, and the town manager then enacts those policy determinations. We just talked about the goal-setting process. That's part of that overarching policymaking. I think your labor council alluded to that in talking about the goals and how you're coming up with this, with the kind of the higher level of management. And obviously, at the end of the day, the town manager is responsible to you. But it's very important to understand that, from a day-to-day perspective, from, again, the folks on the street and the folks in town hall, the folks in the police department, there are chains of command. And at the top of that chain, you have, through your charter, a chief administrative officer. And while the town manager answers to you, you have to, and it's difficult, it's sometimes a frustrating thing, you have to respect those chains of authority in the sense that, and I've actually done investigations on these issues, because it comes up in so many towns where, and it could be a new member of a Board of Selectmen, it could be a seasoned member of a Board of Selectmen, who's kind of used to this idea of, you know, my constituents call me, or I think there's a problem, I'm going to solve that problem. I'm going to go out and I'm going to solve that problem. Some of you may have read in one of my towns about a selectman who determined that there was a problem at an intersection with vehicular traffic. So he took it upon himself to get a bunch of cans of green spray paint and spray the crosswalks and establish specific crosswalks in the town. And as wonderful an idea as that may be, that exceeds the authority of an individual selectman. And his comment was, well, I'm a road commissioner, because the Selectmen Act is road commissioners. You're sewer commissioners. You don't get to authorize a sewer connection, you don't get to authorize the operation of the streets. As attractive as it may be to some, that you can run out and do these things, you actually can't, because the board makes those decisions, or, you know, how is that going to operate? And some of those decisions, by your charter, specifically rest with the town manager. And in your case, again, it's a policymaking body. I have a number of selectmen who feel that, you know, they have the authority to go into places in town hall, or not just town hall, the police department, the fire department, they'll go in and do inspections of the fire department, determine if the facilities are adequate. Or they'll go behind the counter and talk to staff within a town hall and find out what they're doing or try to give them direction. And the problem there is you're asking staff to answer to five masters, as opposed to the one master who, under the charter, and your charter is very specific, has that authority, that oversight. And that's why the town manager is deemed the chief administrative officer. So again, it's also intended for liability reasons, because an individual selectman acting individually may exceed the authority. And under Chapter 258, the Massachusetts Mass tort Claims Act or other statutes, there's a possibility where an individual exceeding that authority could become liable personally for those actions and may not be subject to indemnification by the town. The town cannot indemnify, cannot pay costs of intentional torts. If a board member undertakes an action that is deemed a civil rights violation or an intentional tort, it could result in individual liability for the individual members. And under the triplet case, which our firm was involved with, there is an inability of the town to essentially pay for those damages. So you could find yourself kind of out there on a limb, and suddenly find out that you're alone on that limb, and then that limb could break. So it may seem like, you know, you were elected to this position, but you don't have the authority you think you have. You have a great deal of authority, because ultimately, there's a check and balance, and you vote as a board, you establish those policies, and you put them in place, and for good reason. But you need to be mindful, again, that statutorily and under your own charter, that's limited to your action as a board. And then the town manager acts under her specific authority. Again, she can't exceed her authority. She doesn't make the overarching decisions for the town in terms of the global policies. She executes those policies. That's why you determine what the goals are for the town manager, because the town manager has to be able to address the goals that her masters, I guess I really shouldn't be using that term, that's an out-of-date term. So let's stop using that. But her board, her supervisor, thank you. And yeah, Mark will kick me when I start to go too far into the inappropriate. But in terms of that kind of guidance, that her supervisors will give the oversight to the town manager. But it's essentially, you know, a chain of command in terms of how the authority runs from statute to charter to bylaw. It involves the town manager's contract and what has been negotiated, specifically in terms of how the town manager operates as well, just as we're talking about with respect to the goal-setting process. But I think that it's important to know that framework, because everyone has to recognize, you know, just to be able to stay in their own lane for their own protection and for the benefit of the town as a whole. So I think that's a general oversight and principle as to how boards act and the authority throughout the Commonwealth, again, depending on the local structure. And it's important to note here that because the town has a charter, that charter limits, you know, that creates the box that we were talking about earlier, specifically for the town of Oxford. So I don't know if, Mark, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I was just going to throw one thing. My lens is a little more narrow. Mark is your general counsel, I'm your labor counsel. So I figured just to put a little bit of a lens on this through what I see and the issues that come to my attention from working with, again, many public entities around the Commonwealth. It's important that I think board members understand the role they have, but also the perception that other people have, and in particular, employees. Again, as labor counsel, these are the kind of things that often come to my attention. That individual board members may approach a particular department head, a particular employee, and it may be completely benign, unintentional, but the perception from every employee who works for this town is, that's a selectman, I have to be careful. It doesn't matter, like, best of intentions, all that, there's always a sense of, I have to treat that person differently. And going back to what Mark said before, each of you individually is just a citizen of the town. Collectively, you act as a board. And so one of the points I emphasize, and honestly, I say, I'm looking kind of at the chair, because of what I often hear from different towns and different boards of selectmen is, you know, I'm the chair, can't I do? And as Mark has already talked about, the role of the chair is no different than anybody else except when it comes to open meeting law and setting the agenda. And so it's important, and I'm kind of looking at you, because it's been my experience, Jared, certainly not, because anybody's brought that to my attention, specific to this chair, or any prior chair, quite frankly, in the town of Oxford. But I think it's really important to the point of understanding structures and boundaries. You all are the policy-setting body. As Mark has alluded to, the town manager runs the day-to-day. It's her job to make sure that the department heads are doing their job, and therefore, everybody below them is doing a job, unless there's somebody you appoint. And so, you know, I would really encourage the board members to take that line seriously. Because even if you're just pursuing a conversation with somebody, understand that that person is going to perceive it differently. They're going to perceive this as a selectmen's request when, you know, you're really acting individually, unless the board has charged you with a task. You're acting as individual, but they're not going to see you that way. And so, you know, I always encourage people to be very conservative on that. If there's any question, if it's a board, a piece of board business, what the manager deals with, go through the board, the chair, and say, look, you know, this is something the board has talked about that's important, I'd like to be the person who follows up on it, and that'll come up at a board meeting. And then you have the blessing to say, okay, the board has designated me to follow up on this point and go talk to them. And there's an opportunity for communication between the manager or the chair and wherever that follow-up may be. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mark, but I think that's an important point.
Yeah. I think that is a very important point, because that does come up frequently, you know, it could be a resident, or it could be a staff person who gets either inquiry made to them, or makes an inquiry to a member of the Board of Selectmen. And there's an expectation, I, as a resident, brought it to a selectman, I should get results directly. Or I'm an employee and a selectman came to me, now I have this obligation. And again, under your form of government, the day-to-day operations of those employees is the responsibility of the town manager. And so, as Mark talked about, you know, making sure to have an appropriate line of communication to the town manager. Somebody brought something to me, I'm now bringing it to you, because you're the one who actually executes the actions on behalf of the town. I have a concern, I bring it to you. Or, very often, and I think it's been the policy of this board, to bring matters to the chair, so that we don't, we also want to avoid a potential violation of the open meeting law, that individual members of the board have discussions amongst themselves and then take action outside a properly posted meeting. So instead, the chair becomes the repository, for better or for worse, becomes the complaint department and becomes the suggestion office. And so the individual members would bring a matter, if they so choose, to the chair. The chair can then determine either whether it should go on the agenda or simply refer it to the town manager. And the town manager then becomes the one who's charged with determining how that matter should be resolved. But it's important to note that individual members of the board, as Mark said, and I think as I alluded to earlier, are essentially individual citizens. They act as individuals, as citizens, they don't have that specific authority. As a group, you bring these issues together, you deliberate them, and you make those determinations as a policymaking board, and that's when you take your action. The town manager does the day-to-day, oversees the employees, the personnel, and the direction of the town, essentially, on the street and within the town's buildings. So the next issue, of course, is, as is indicated in the agenda item, the open meeting law implications, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about how the agenda is established. I heard some of that earlier in the discussion when the chair was re-elected during the reorganization process. And the concern that has been raised about how you wind up establishing an agenda and who gets to speak at a meeting, these are all issues, again, that are addressed both in the open meeting law, the regulations that are established by the Attorney General. The Attorney General oversees the open meeting law. Years ago, the open meeting law was essentially overseen by the various district attorney. And so we would get different interpretations from each district attorney. I would know, okay, I'm glad the complaint came in this particular county, because I know that that district attorney is a lot more lenient than others. And we had a lot of different opinions and different ways of addressing. But the law was changed a number of years ago, and now it's overseen by the Attorney General's office and the Division of Open Government. And the Division of Open Government promulgates the regulations, oversees complaints, open meeting law complaints, and now there's a lot more uniformity, although I think they're a lot stricter than some of the district attorneys, for better or for worse, depending on perspective. But the open meeting law is very specific in specifying that with respect to notice of a meeting, and again, I know this was covered at the open meeting law training, but I think it's worth reiterating. This is in Chapter 30a, Section 20b. Notice shall be printed, this has to do with the agenda, notice shall be printed in a legible, easily understandable format, and shall contain the date, time, and place of the meeting, and a listing of topics that the chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed at the meeting. So if the chair reasonably anticipates that a matter is going to be discussed at the meeting, the chair may put those items on the agenda. This is not a mandate, doesn't require that the chair put the items on the agenda, but what it says is that if the chair reasonably anticipates those matters, they are placed on agenda. And that's to prevent a situation, that's to protect the public, and avoid a situation where the board undertakes a discussion on a matter that didn't show up on the agenda, so the public doesn't know that that matter's going to be discussed. And I talk about this with my moderators at town meetings all the time, and I talk about it to my boards as well. I use what I always talk about as my fuzzy slipper rule, where if the individual sitting at home in their fuzzy slippers, watching whatever program they choose to watch at night, and relaxing after dinner, doesn't know that a matter's on the agenda, they're going to have no interest in coming into the meeting, they're comfortable staying home. But the next day, they read that a topic was brought up, and we talked about this with scope of the article at town meeting, but by talking about what's on the agenda. If they wake up the next day and find out that this item was discussed and a decision was made, and they weren't aware of it, they're going to be pretty annoyed, because they had no idea that that topic even was going to be considered, because it didn't appear on that properly posted agenda. So the agenda is intended to protect the public, to make sure that... So the agenda is intended to protect the public, to make sure that, that the board addresses those items that are reasonably anticipated by the chair. We all know that items can come up at the last minute, we have some, some items on this agenda that came up less than 48 hours prior to the meeting, and there are, there is an allowance for amending of an agenda for items that were not reasonably anticipated by the chair. So an agenda can be amended to add those items that were not reasonably anticipated by the chair. And items can be brought up, and, and again, it's up to the chair, if an item is brought up at a meeting, it's not on the agenda, it's not an amend agenda, but it's brought up by, by, by another member of the board, and the chair then determines whether to allow discussion at this meeting. It's something important enough, a grant has come up, it wasn't anticipated, it's being brought up now, the town has the ability to get a million-dollar grant if the board approves. Chances are, the chair is going to say, I'm going to allow that discussion. But if there's something that, that has to do with a broad-ranging policy matter, that the chair says, well, I could have anticipated that and didn't put it on the, on the agenda for a reason, and I'm not going to allow discussion of it now. Or the chair says, that's, that is an interesting topic that's going to be of interest to many members of the public, the chair may decide, I'll put that on a later agenda. But ultimately, that's the discretion of the chair. The chair has that authority. And so, the mere fact that someone brings a matter to the chair doesn't mean that the chair has to put that on. The chair has that discretion. That's what that language tells us. And in terms of being able to discuss that, the matters that are not on the agenda, or that, that the chair feels are, are not pertinent, or for whatever reason that the chair determines is, is not a, a discussion that, that is going to be entertained, the law specifically says that no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall at the crest of the chair be silent. Very strong language, and that's specifically, again, from chapter 30A, section 20, and that's subsection G. It's very strong language, and that's an example of where the chair is given specific statutory authority that kind of sets the chair apart. And the reason being that if you don't have a chair, you can't run a meeting, and the open meeting law really recognizes that very clearly. You, you can't operate without a chair. It's not just the board of selectmen, it's the same thing with your conservation commission, your, your school committee, your, your board of health, all of your boards and commissions have that structure, because the chair has to be able to run the meeting, and there has to be a mechanism to determine what is and, and is not within bounds of discussion. So, you know, the chair has the gavel. And, and that's, that's, that, that gavel directly responds to the language I just read. So it's important to recognize that, and it is, it can be frustrated, frustrating, you know, I've been, I've been in federal court on cases where, where board, board members have been removed from boards for disrupting a meeting. It's not something that, that happens often, and it's not something that's generally recommended, but it can happen. That, that provision in the open meeting law doesn't, doesn't end with, with the group behind me, it extends to the group in front of me as well. So the chair does have some substantial authority, with the understanding that that's going to be exercised with appropriate discretion, but it is the chair's discretion. So tho, those are some of the topics, I don't know, you know, through you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to now entertain some questions, I, I don't know, Mark, if you want to add anything, but I wanted to kind of give an overall flavor and then be responsive to, to the board through the chair.
I would just like to open up to the board for any questions that they have, and, because I think you were very helpful in defining what our function is as a board. If I'm reading you correctly, someone calls up Dennis and says, I have a pothole I have a problem with. The proper chain of command would be, he would take that to the town manager, tell her of the issue, and then she would talk with a different department to take care of that.
And that's, and that's an excellent example, because that's, that's a practical example. And so, we all have that, I have a pothole that opened up in front of my driveway, or a town tree fell, or, you know, something very practical. And we all know, we want to be helpful, and, and that happens with, with boards across the Commonwealth, where everybody wants to be helpful, I was elected, I should be able to do something about it. But the reality is, you don't have the authority to direct use of town resources and use of personnel, because that's, again, under the authority of, of the town manager, you know, specifically, specifically under, under your charter. So the, the, you're never going to be able to stop people from calling you, that's, that's why you got elected. You're, you're, you're the one who, who put yourself out there, and now you're going to get the phone calls. But you are not in a position to then direct Jared to get out there, or direct personnel. You then refer that to the town manager appropriately, and if, if there's a process for logging complaints, or for, for determining who, who made what comment and what, how it's handled, that log would be handled through the town manager's office to make sure that personnel are properly assigned. Because it could be a situation where, you know, we're aware of those, that pothole, and there's a series of potholes there, and, and we have a program on, on how to delegate scarce resources. And it, it becomes difficult if, if an individual selectman, trying to be helpful, says, I can get that done for you. You can't always get that done, you can't always focus the resources, there may be a program in place that has to be addressed. It could also be a situation where there are other factors that you're not aware of, that pothole is actually not on town property, the, the town might have an easement, or it could be on, on a piece of private property or a private way that has not been accepted. That tree that fell down is not actually a town tree, and now the town's going to have to take some kind of enforcement action to require someone to remove it from town property. So there are, there are a lot of factors that, on first glance, it seems like, I can help with that situation, I can, I can volunteer my time, I can offer to do something, to lend a hand, be it in town hall or outside town hall, I'll take on certain goals and responsibilities myself, without realizing that there are policies and procedures in place to make sure, you've, you've got union considerations, you've got prevailing wage and, and competitive bidding that dictates, you know, the, the purchase of the materials to fill that pothole, the personnel who are going to undertake the filling of that pothole, the, the personnel within town hall who are going to log the complaint, and how it all gets handled. There are procedures, and that's why it's appropriate to go to the individual, your chief administrative officer, that's why you hired that individual, that's, that's the town manager's responsibility. And that way, you can say, you could certainly say to your constituent, I've brought that complaint to the attention of the appropriate person, and if you need to follow up, please call the town manager's office. And that, and then, you've done, you've done your job, but you haven't exceeded your authority, you haven't taken on specific liability, and you haven't incurred obligations of the town. And the other thing that's kind of important, I, I do a lot of contracts work, one of, one of my responsibilities is reviewing and revising or drafting contracts for municipalities, and sometimes actually enforcing those contracts. And one of the things we talk about a lot, and it's, it's, it's something that, municipalities have a lot of positions that private, private entities do not have. Municipalities cannot indemnify, municipalities cannot pay deposits before they receive goods or services. And, and one of the things municipalities can't be charged with is something known as claims for quantum merit. So if somebody does work for the town that hasn't been authorized, the town doesn't have to pay for that work. So, think of a situation where a single member of a board authorizes someone to do work on behalf of the town, and then that person submits a bill. I had this situation where a, a, an official of the town authorized someone to re-carpet an area within a town building, and then a bill was submitted. There was no appropriation, and there was no authorization, and they claimed this concept of quantum merit, which is pay, you know, payment for the service rendered. And there's a long line of cases that says, you, you don't have agency theory, so individuals can't be agents of the town without proper authorization, and individuals can't bind the town for, for costs not otherwise authorized. So imagine a situation where you've authorized, you've somehow authorized that cost, the, the town doesn't have the appropriation, didn't sign a contract, didn't authorize that payment, and now you may be subject to some liability, because that individual's going to look to you and say, you told me, I acted on, on your request. And the town certainly has defenses that you as an individual may not have. So that's just another avenue, another aspect, just to recognize the, again, the box that we live in, because that box is pretty narrow in comparison to, say, private companies where unfortunately, you know, your, your contracting abilities. I love when I negotiate contracts on behalf of municipalities, because I could say, no, 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 and people say, well, but that's not how it works. I'm like, yeah, it, it actually does for municipality, we have limits that are very different than, than private entities. And it, it gives us some upper hand, some benefits in negotiation, but those are things that would be lost if you, acting on your own as an individual, try to, try to intervene or intercede.
Mark, I have one more question, and I'll open up to the board. In an issue where someone comes with a complaint for a particular department, okay, someone has an issue with the DPW director. Do we bring that to the town manager as well, is that the process?
Well, we all, I'm going to-
And that's the labor part, so-
Yeah, I'm going to first-
You're both named Mark, so-
The only, the only, yeah. We're, we're relatively interchangeable, I guess. The only thing I was going to say is, you know, certainly with respect to that, we all love Jared, so we know that that-
I'm not, Jared, I hope you don't mind, I use you for an accent. There's no issue with you, but I, I think we've had issues in the past where there was a particular problem in a department, and some of the town selectmen took it on themselves, and it caused all kinds of issues. So I'm asking you for the process, if that happens, how do we handle it?
Yeah, so it's, one of the things that's important is to think about who the hiring authority is.
Okay.
So the town manager, under your charter, is the hiring authority for virtually every position of regular employees. There's some unique ones, I'd have to look at the charters again, but, but with the, when you talk about police chiefs and everybody in the police department now, right, that was, I think, something that was amended at the town meeting, the fire department, the DPW, all those structures underneath, the town accountant's office, the finance department, those people are all appointed, I believe, with the charter by the town manager. So the board doesn't have the authority, like, to get into, well, we think something should happen here, right? The board doesn't have the authority to even issue so much as a written warning, it's not your purview. The day-to-day affairs and the supervision of employees belongs to whoever the appointing authority is. And so in that example, the DPW director being someone who was appointed by the town manager, if you received a complaint, you can either take it and say, I'm going to forward it to the town manager, let the town manager talk to the person, or you can direct the person who came to you and say, you know, that's something you really need to talk to the town manager about, and go ahead and facilitate that. But other than that, it's, it's not in the board's jurisdiction to do that.
It's really not that different than the other complaints we talked about, if you really think about it, in terms of who has the authority. But in this case, again, it's specific, you know, appointing authority has, has that specific authority, but again, the town manager has, as the chief administrative officer, also has the authority to oversee other complaints. So I think it's, it's, it's a consistent, yeah.
It's comparable, yeah. I think the, the thing that can be different, particular employment, and this is, there are a few cases out in the Commonwealth where this has happened, a board has basically taken on itself to terminate an employee when it had no authority to do it. And I can't even explain to you how significant a civil rights violation that is, and how substantial the damages are in those kind of cases. So that's an extreme example, right? And it's far removed from just how you handle a complaint. But this, this concept that Mark has talked about throughout his comments about the structure and the authority is really important, and I think the way I always say it to, to somebody who is unfamiliar with, with town government or, or any government really is, in the private world, we think we can do anything that somebody says isn't unlawful. In the public world, you can't do anything unless it's authorized, right? And so, everybody has a level of authority, by statute, by state constitution, by federal constitution, by charter, by law. We need a source of authority to do anything. And on this particular point, the town manager, by virtue of the charter, has the authority to really manage day-to-day affairs and appointment decisions with the vast majority of employees in the town.
So there's a chain of command, we have to follow it, and that's based on our charter and state law. And I think that's an important thing that people need to understand, that it's not up to us to go to any department and say, I heard about this. That's not, that's a no-no.
No, it should not-
You have to go through the proper chain of command.
If there's that point of concern, that concern should be brought to the town manager, and let the town manager deal with it.
At this time, I'm going to open it up for the board for any questions for Mark and Mark, and Dennis?
Yeah, I just kind of have a comment, you know, I'm the senior person on this board now. So I've been here many years, had many people that have advised me, and one of the first things I was told when I became a selectman by a previous selectman was that I am nothing more than a resident of the town. When I'm sitting here, I'm part of a board, but when I leave this meeting, I am a citizen of the town. I have no right to go into any part of this town and authorize anything or do anything because of my position. In fact, I was told at that time that doing so intimidates people because of my position, that if I went to an employee or, and asked for something, they would not know what to do, because they see me as an authoritative figure. And so, I, to this day, I, whether it's town hall, I, there's never been a department in this town, in this town hall that I've just walked into, fire department, police department, I go there several times, but I always have to go to the door, you know, I always have to get buzzed in at the police department, I always have to get buzzed in at the fire department, you know, that's, and then from there, if they allow me in, then I can go in. And the, the last thing that I was told is that we have a secretary, but she's not my personal secretary, I have no right to go in and require her to do things for me. Again, kind of going to your, just as a board, she does things for the board, but not for an individual, so I don't have any, any authority over her. I can't go in and say, hey, Dee, do this for me, that, that's, am I right in my thinking? That's the way I've always thought in all my years.
Yeah, I think, I think that's really good practical advice that you've got, and I think that, you know, being handed down from other board members, it's, it's born from experience. You know, I, I've been doing this for, you know, 30-odd years, I think Mark has been doing the same, we've both been working with the town of Oxford for about the same time. And what, what you learn is, and, and again, sometimes it's a frustration, that, you know, as Mark talked about the, the structure, you know, as we keep talking about this, this box, and, and again, and I think, I think Mark put it really well when he said, when you're in private business, you know, you get to do what, you, you try to do whatever you can do. When you're, when you're in, in the public sector, you can only do what you're authorized to do. And as we keep emphasizing, and it's not being emphasized to, to penalize you or to chastise you, it's really, to, it, it's to protect you and, and to emphasize the, the way the process works, that you only have the authority that you're granted, and you're granted authority as a board. As individuals, you're, you're not granted any individual authority. And even when you think about the chair and those authorities that I, that I read to you, those are acting as, as part of the board. The, the chair is acting as, you know, the, the titular head of the board. But once the chair walks out of this building, you know, he, he doesn't, he, he can't order or do anything, he can't demand anything from, from the town manager. I think the, the example of, of the secretary is a very good one, who operates to, to prepare documents and keep the board informed and address the board's needs, but not the individual's. When an individual comes in and asks Dee, you know, can you type this up, or you can, can you do this, or you can respond to this issue, you know, Dee doesn't have the authority. And the unfortunate thing, and I'm sure Mark would have more to talk about this, the, the, you know, the intimidation factor that a, a selectman comes in, I know we're using Dee as an example, and I don't, but it could be anyone, it could be Jared, and, and anybody comes into those offices-
For the fire chief, say, let's pick on him for a-
Pick on the fire chief, yeah, exactly.
Now I don't feel alone.
And, yeah, certainly don't want to make anybody feel, feel alone in being singled out, but at the end of the day, that, that ability for an individual to go to an individual employee and make a demand is an excedence of authority.
All right, any, anything else? Dennis, Tim, Robert, you have anything?
I, I've got a whole lot, so.
Oh, speak up, go ahead.
If you want to, if you want to go first, go ahead.
So, this is really more to the chair. Is this, is this being brought up as far as, like, the town operations because of something specific? Because I always hear, like, even from the last board, you know, this kind of same, kind of, oh, we don't want people directing town employees to do things, but I kind of haven't actually heard of people actually doing that. So if there's an example of where I did something, or us, it would be helpful to know.
No, I, I don't want to go that route. I think that this whole thing is, I think that people, and I'm talking about the public as well, don't really have a true understanding of what our function is as a board, what the town manager's function is, and what my function is as its chairman. And I thought that it would be very informative for the board to get legal advice regarding the state law and our charter. So I'm not, I'm not singling out anybody, I just think that it is something that, as a town and as a board, we need to understand what our positions are, to make clear what our positions are, and this is not out to get anybody or to accuse anybody of anything. And that's why I did that.
So, do you think, like, in your opinion as the chair, that it's appropriate for the selectmen to- the selectmen to ask department heads, kinda speak to them at all?
Well, I want you to stop for a second. This is why I got them here. That's a legal question, that's not up to me.
Well, so I bring this up because it's actually specifically in the selectmen's handbook that was provided to us, that the town manager brought to the town, saying that as a new selectman, you should get a list of key town officials and their phone numbers. There would be no point in having those phone numbers if they were never to speak to them.
Well, that's why I have town council here, so you can address that.
Well, I think it's important to note that the telephone, and I, I, I don't know if we're talking about the private telephone numbers, but private telephone numbers, of course, are not public record. So, so that, that's, that's obviously a concern. I can't speak specifically to, you know, policies are, you know, like, general guidance, I don't even know how old the policies are at this point, Jen.
The previous town chairman was starting to work on updating the policies.
Yeah, and, and, and that-
Policies, one thing, state law and-
But again, I, I think, and I think Mark will chime in, I think he's eager to chime in on this issue, because again, we, we have to look at the charter. And the charter, the charter is what dictates. The policies are, you know, they're, they're, they're not, they're not law. And, and so it is ultimately the, the charter that governs. And again, if, if you, if you had individual selectmen making, making those phone calls, it, it flies in the face of what is specified in the charter.
Yeah, and I, and I think just to, I don't wanna repeat myself, but the overall structure here is that the board oversees the town manager, the town manager deals with the day-to-day issues, including the oversight and direction of all the subordinate employees in the town. You know, I, I can't speak to that document, I've never seen it, but I can also suggest to you, inconsistent with what I said before, there may be a time when the board, for whatever reason, designates somebody to work on a project and there's need to be in contact with someone. So I don't think it, I don't interpret what I've said, at least, as being, "Thou shalt never have a conversation with somebody." That's, that's not what I'm saying, but it, what I think is important is differentiate when you're acting as a representative of the board because the board, presumably in conjunction with the town manager, has said, "Yeah, this makes sense for a board member to be involved," and the board, you discuss that in a meeting, and then there's a charge. That's different than, you know, I just, I gotta go ask the DPW director or the fire chief about how they do this, how they do that, right? That's an issue of importance that gets put on the agenda for the board, and you bring the person in and say, "Look, the board would like to hear from the fire chief as to, you know, whatever the issue is." So I, I can't, you know, I don't know what the origins of that document is, how old it is, I-
That's the Massachusetts Municipal Association Selectmen's Handbook that was last revised in 2014.
But again, that's, that's a, that's not long-
That's a general document. That's, that's a guide from the MMA that doesn't necessarily account for local structures.
What, what I would like to point out is that virtually everything you've said is in there, so don't be put off and afraid that I'm gonna pull out something that's, like, crazy.
No, and we, I mean, we, we work with the MMA on a, on a regular basis, but again, the, the MMA, just, just like, there, there are organizations, the, you know, that, that assist boards of health and the conservation commissions, and they provide general guidance documents, but ultimately, and, you know, I, I thought you were talking about a, a policy developed by the town itself, but ultimately, it, it has to be consistent with the charter. If it's inconsistent with the charter, then it's, then it's not, it's not applicable. And I think Mark has talked about authority and, and that, how you, how you review that authority based upon who's the appointing authority and who has the charter authority. And unless, some, and even if, even if the board designates someone to take on a task, that task has to be within the authority of, of the board. So if the board suddenly tasks a, a, a member of the board to undertake duties or authorities that belong to the town manager, that would be an inappropriate and inapplicable delegation of authority, because again, the charter, the charter gives the town manager the authority.
And that's why I was saying before, you know, you gotta have the conversation with the town manager.
Right.
Presumably, it's gonna be a rare circumstance where this board says, "All right, I'm gonna designate one member to do something with a department that's almost always gonna fall within the hand of the, of the, and the authority of the town manager," you know, just leaving open the possibility that there could be something that's out there, you know, where selectmen involvement is appropriate, but I'm not, under your charter, I'm not sure what that would be, to be perfectly honest with you.
Any other questions?
No, so this is more kind of a, a comment related to this, is that, kind of, my concern related to this is kind of, I feel like we're going to, like, the worst-case scenario to start. So like, I, as an individual, wanna know about all the departments in town, just kind of, I'm new to the town, you know, I think that I'm gonna be up here in this board having to make decisions on behalf of the citizens, and so it's good to know, kind of, the background, you know, and the condition of the facilities and all these things. And so I had made a request of the town manager for an opportunity for the new selectmen to see the new facilities, and I've never heard back. So it's, you know, my concern is not, oh, like, I'm gonna run down to, you know, the fire department, start telling them how to manage their people, and, you know, it's more just, but I would like an opportunity, you know, for the fire chief to show the selectman his facility, so that when I know there's big S's that are gonna be coming in terms of the capital plan, you know, so seeing the facility firsthand, and now if you, as the chairman, want to do that in a formalized setting where we have like a, I'm sorry, the term's escaping me right now, but basically a site visit, you know, for the new selectmen or any of the ones who wish to see it, you know, who, who may have before, I don't, I don't think that that's inappropriate, and I think that, that citizens kind of expect that of us, that we're gonna make decisions based on knowing things. And then lastly, just, you know, I don't, as a board member, I am a board member, but I am still also a private citizen, and so if I have observations, you know, I don't see any reason why I couldn't tell those to a department head. And of course, copy the manager, 'cause the manager needs to know what's going on in the town, but-
Well, I think they've answered that question.
Yeah, I mean, you-
I mean, you might wanna, you might think you want the opportunity, but from a legal standpoint, in our charter and state law, that's not-
So there's, there's nothing in the charter-
Let me finish. Let him answer the question, please, 'cause that's-
So if we're talking about, like, the pothole example, I don't remember who brought that up, and you wanna say, "Well, look, why don't I just let the DPW director know there's a pothole in the street or, or what have you?" I understand, it's like, absolutely well-intentioned, right? Nobody wants to ruin a tire or whatever in a pothole, and you certainly don't want fifty people down doing that. But I, I would go back to the point I made before, that when individual selectmen approach somebody, it's always taken differently. There's just no way you can escape it. You're an elected official, and so your presence as an individual is gonna be taken differently than, you know, John Doe walking down the street and who happens to call the DPW director and say, "Hey, I just ruined a tire in a pothole, what can you do about it?" The DPW director's probably gonna say, "Let me go figure out what's going on, see if we can fix that problem." So it's, it is, it's one of those things where I think you have to, as I said, take a conservative view on how you're communicating with other people to avoid the perception that everybody else in this town who's gonna, who works for this town is going to have, which is, "I have to think differently and react differently." And so it's just, it's quite frankly, it's better for everybody if that information just goes to the town manager and she filters it, it's down to whoever the appropriate person is.
So, so to kind of respond to that, the, I can still, as a private citizen, make those observations, and the whole point of having town councils here to talk about this, you said, was that the public would hear this as well, and presumably, the town employees that are here and in the public are also hearing this. So the town employees should understand that if the selectmen come to them with an observation, that, that's not in order to do something. That's why we're paying-
Well, I think we're going down the wrong track again. You're, you're trying to implement your own, as a citizen or whatever, talking to a town employee, and I think that's the problem, right? Potential problem.
Yeah, and what, you would remember, you, you have no authority except as a, as a board as a whole, right? Go back to that principle. And so it, it is just, you have to recognize the, the difficulty in differentiating sort of hats. People always talk about, "Well, I'm wearing this hat, I'm wearing that hat," you know, and, "I'm not, oh, I'm, I'm just calling you as a citizen, I'm not calling you as my, as a selectman." And as much as people can say that and truly mean it, it is very difficult. Now, we've picked an easy example, we're talking about a pothole in the street where, quite frankly, presumably the DPW director's gonna agree with you and say, "Let me go take a look at it," and that's the response that you would get, it's a response that every citizen would get. And it would be prioritized along with other, other work. So we, we picked a fairly easy example where it feels somewhat benign, but it is a very slippery slope. That is all I can tell you, is a very slippery slope between sort of what is the truly benign sort of thing that nobody would question and the things that may come on down the line, which look more like, "Well, maybe you should prioritize this. Maybe you should prioritize spending the limited resources you have on fixing these basketballs we were talking about earlier." And if you were to make that phone call, or any member of this board were to make that phone call or have that conversation, it's going to be perceived differently than if John Doe on the street does.
So what is the, Mr. Chairman, what is the purpose of this training for the public if town council doesn't believe that the public, which includes town employees, would understand that we, as individual selectmen, can't direct their tasking?
I don't understand your question. My whole point, my whole point upfront when we started this was to educate everybody, including you and me and everybody else, as to what our role is as a selectman, and what is our responsibility, and what we can do and we can't do. And one of the issues that have come up in the past, I'm not saying with this board, where, where town selectmen got involved in certain things that they shouldn't got involved in, and it caused problems for the town. So I thought, seeing that we have three inexperienced members, and I'm an inexperienced chairman, that we should get the view and the opinion of town council as to what our responsibilities are, and I think I've done the right thing, and I think many people on the board feel. If you don't agree with their interpretation, that's certainly your prerogative, and if you wanna go and talk to a town employee on your own.
Mr. Chairman, if, if, if I may, to this point, this idea of how it benefits the, the public, it's really, the, the idea, I think, is each, each, each member of the board of selectmen is imbued with some apparent or, or appearance of authority. And the idea is that each of you has the, is, is expected to have the greater knowledge of your authority, the level and the limits of your authority. And so it's really to you to know that if a member of the public, 'cause not every member of the public is watching this meeting, not every wants to listen to us talk, they have better things to do, but that, that's not gonna stop them from making these phone calls. And so the, the, the intention is for the educated selectmen to know that when they get those phone calls, they then appropriately pass them off, that they don't use what they see as their apparent authority to then undertake or direct. And, and to get to Mark's point of possibly directing the use of limited resources, you then get into the potential of conflict of interest issues if a selectman uses their authority to gain unwarranted privileges or benefits for themselves or their families or possibly an appearance of impropriety. So again, the intent is that the, the members of the board of selectmen will be educated to know what to do when that phone call comes in. That's not gonna stop members of the public. Members of the public will have lost, long ago lost interest in what we're saying and will continue to make those phone calls, but the, but the selectmen, like any other town official, needs to know the limit of their authority.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I don't see how, the idea that, like, I understand, so just as kind of a personal note, having been in the military, I don't really like the use of the term "chain of command" because this isn't a military unit, we're not going to war with Auburn or anything like that. It's, and the reason I, I draw that distinction is because there's, you know, commands, and then there's information, you know, and I don't necessarily agree that we should not want the people on the select board to just be aware of what's going on and to, for, you know, not saying I would ever presume to direct department heads, that's why we have a manager, you know, but just to, just to know so that if people call, you know, we, we understand what's going on in our town.
So if people call, they're telling you with a complaint or an issue, you contact the town manager, and you go for her, and she'll give you the answer that you need. I, I don't, I, maybe you don't like the word "chain of command," I don't know what other word to use, but there's a process that we have to follow, and then making it very evident what that process is. Now, if you don't agree with it or don't like it, I'm sorry, but this is what the legal council is telling us how to handle these things.
Yeah, I think the, the need for information, I mean, fairness is key to the board's job, but there's also a difference between sort of going looking on your own and also asking, like, "You know what? I wanna site visit as an example. You wanna understand what kind of shape is the fire department or the, the fire station?" 'Cause I think you've got two or three of them, right? And you wanna have a site visit and have that discussion here. Or if there's a concern that's raised, the fire chief can be asked, you know, if the chair puts him on the agenda, to come in and talk about what are the needs of the fire department. So there, there are mechanisms, absolutely, to convey to you the information. It can also be through the town manager, where you say, "Look, I'd, I'd love to understand how we do this better," or whatever it might be, and information can be provided to you. It's not to say that you're not entitled to receive that information, a lot of it's public record anyway, but there's, there just is a process that is more consistent with the structure of the town, and that's what I think I, without speaking for Mark, are recommending to you.
But I think, I think getting back to that entitlement to information, five members are entitled to the same information.
Right.
And so the concern is, when one selectman goes on a fact-finding mission and tries to gain information, that's information that should be imparted to the board as a whole so that decisions are made on, on the same level. And that's why, and I, and I'll avoid using the, the term "chain of command," if I use that, I, I, it, it just was offhand, but the idea is, again, and, and, and I, you know, I, I respect others who have been in other positions and have seen other mechanisms of authority, but again, we've been doing this for over thirty years, and, and we, we understand how the municipal structure works, and again, you have a five-member board, and each member is entitled to the same level of information. If one member thinks it would be a good idea to know what's happening at a particular facility, that's a request that can be made, can be made to the, the chair, can we put on the agenda a discussion about the condition of the fire station? Or you go to the town manager and say, "To the town manager, at some point, would it be possible for you to make a presentation to the board?" Because the town manager, in managing the town, is not in a position to necessarily make five separate visits and, and do five separate introductions, but the town manager may have an idea of how to bring that information. The town manager would be able to bring specific personnel in and, and provide a presentation that would be probably more informative and would allow the discussion to have, in a, happen in a public forum so that the questions are being asked publicly, so that there isn't the concern that private questions are being asked, and then people are being held accountable for answering questions that nobody else heard, even heard the questions being asked. So now you have a situation where a, a selectman may be getting private, private information or maybe interpreting information depending on how the question was asked, and suddenly, and we always worry about the, the forum shopping concept, that there, there, you're gonna get, you're gonna get answers depending on what the questions are, and each one of you may ask the question differently. And if it's done individually, it's, it's, it's not gonna be beneficial to the town, it's going to be a, a, a potential trap for the employee who now doesn't know what, what the question is and how they're answering it, and it's gonna be very difficult for the town manager to, to manage, and it's gonna be very difficult for this board to make a decision. So that's why those kind of information-seeking quests should go through the appropriate channel so that you get the appropriate person who could then answer. You have a particular question, that's gonna trigger a question from Selectman Frick, that's gonna lead to Selectman LaMarche having a follow-up question, and that way that, that discussion can be had with the entire board present, and the entire board getting an equal access to that information.
Anything else?
I already said I can't take his advice, I apologize.
And I, I, I do need to answer that, and, and Selectman King needs to recognize, I'm not giving Selectman King advice, I'm not your counsel, I'm not your attorney. My advice is to the town as a whole, so that, it's important to note that I'm not giving you advice, you're not, you're, you're, as a private individual, I, I don't have an attorney-client privilege with you.
Thank you. Tim, do you have anything?
Yeah, I-
You said you had some things and-
Yeah, I've got a few questions, some of them are already answered, but completely off of, of the, the kind of chain of command, so to speak. I'm just trying to figure out, think, when it comes to adding things to the agenda, you know, I've been approached, and I'm sure other people have, with questions, concerns, like you said, that happens, but my concerns are the same as a constituents, that they're not gonna be able to get their item on the agenda that they want to be heard. So as a selectman, it can be very frustrating to not get that done, so I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding that, that it, it's not just solely up at the chair, but I, I guess it is, that he could, he can deny that. So what's the recourse for, for an individual selectman, if they make that attempt and are denied? What can they, what can be done?
That, that frustration is understood. It's not just yours. I, I've heard that from, from, again, I represent many municipalities, and that topic comes up quite a bit. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on which, which seat you're sitting in, the open meeting law gives the chairman a specific level of authority. The attorney general recognizes that authority. We, we talk to the attorney general, both in the Division of Open Government and the We talk to the Attorney General, both in the Division of Open Government and the Municipal Law Unit on a regular basis. And it's recognized that a chair has that authority. So it does create that frustration because as a sitting selectman, you want, you want to have that ability. You don't necessarily get that. Members of the public do not get that. They may, they may come to you and say, we think this should go on the agenda, but ultimately that's the discretion given by the law to the, to the chair. And, you know, I expect that, you know, the chair will give, you know, reasoned consideration, but it doesn't mean that the chair even has to give reasons. It just means the chair has to consider it or not. And, and that's, that's how the open meeting law works. I didn't write that law, but, but I have been working under it and under its multiple iterations for quite a long time. And that's ultimately what the position that the law puts you in. So your frustration is codified right here.
So if I decided that I wanted to speak on something that wasn't on the agenda, what is the recourse of, I guess, anybody at that point?
Barring a charter change? Barring a charter change? Because the charter, like I said, acts like a special act. And again, you know, it's a very, it's a very significant undertaking. And even then, you know, it has to be considered by the legislature. The law is very clear. And it gives that authority to the chair. So when you say, I want to speak, I think I read you that, that really strong language that says that no person shall address and even go so far as to say, at the request of the chair, they must be silent. So the chair can silence, the chair can silence me. When he's done with me, he can say, I've heard enough from you. And obviously, I'm, I'm sitting way below you in terms of my authority, but the, as I said before, that authority stems to the folks behind me, the folks at this desk and the folks at that table. Everybody on, everybody there, ultimately, the chair has that authority.
So let's just say I decided to speak on something that was not on the agenda. What, what are, what can happen at that moment?
What can, you mean, if you, if you persisted?
Sure.
If you, so if you raise your hand and you say, I want to speak on this topic and the chair says, it's not on the agenda, I'm not going to allow it, and you say, Mr. Chairman, it wasn't anticipated by you, I'm bringing it up. And the chair says, no, I'm not going to allow it. And you continue, at some point, the chair, under the open meeting law, can find you out of order, can determine that you're disrupting the meeting and could actually have you removed from the meeting. Now, as I said, I've dealt with those situations where elected officials have been removed. It's a, it's a rare thing and it's not one that we, we recommend being taken lightly, but it can happen. And that's specifically codified in the open meeting law and the regulations. So the chair does have extensive authority if you continue to, if the chair determines that you have disrupted the meeting. And, you know, obviously, if that's, if, if, there are many connotations in which, in which these discussions can occur, but ultimately, the chair has the authority to determine who can speak and who can't.
Now, kind of a follow-up question, kind of on the same field here. You know, when it comes to selectman announcements, can something be said in there that is, is not on the agenda? If I wanted to just talk about it, discuss it, whatever the case may be, could I say that in the selectman announcements portion?
Well, I think, I think the selectman's announcements, and I saw it on your agenda.
It's community.
It's community.
Community announcements.
It's, it's a limited forum to make announcements about public events. The Boy Scouts are doing a bottle drive, the Girl Scouts are selling cookies, there's, you know, there's a particular event. An actual announcement, it's not intended as an agenda item to introduce topics. I want to announce that I want to talk about this. That's not, that's not the intent, it's not what's on the agenda. But again, the selectman, the chair of the board has the authority to limit that discussion. So if the chair determines that you're out of order, you're out of order, there is no appeal. That, that language that I read, if the chair asks you to be silent, you have to be silent. So if you, if you go off on a tangent under, under community announcements that the chair feels is out of order, that, that's the discretion of the chair.
So have we adopted any policy or procedures? I know I discussed this in the last meeting and I asked the question a few times, but anything that we've been given for reference and anything that I've looked at, and I've looked at some, a lot of stuff on the Attorney General's website, and some of it, I, with what you're saying with the chair, but it suggests that if there's no procedure that's been adopted, such as like Roberts Rules or, or, you know, it talks about bells for this specific board, it says that a motion can be made at any time by, by anybody. So if I, if I wanted to make a motion to discuss something or have it added?
Not sure where you're reading from.
It's, it's the handbook. But this is actually in multiple, I want to, I want, I understand what you're going to say.
I've got to emphasize, that handbook is not law, it's, it's an interpretation, some by attorneys, some by non-attorneys. This is the actual statute. That's a, that's a guideline written by, by a, an entity that does lobbying on behalf of municipalities. We work very closely with them, but it's not the law.
Okay.
And when it talks about anybody can make a motion at any time, that's, that's simply not true. The, the chair would have to recognize you to be able to speak. And the way a meeting works, as you know, you raise your hand to be, to speak, if you're not recognized, you can't then just make a motion, the chair could rule you out of order. And again, I've read the specific language in the statute, so that's the language. And when you talk about, has this body adopted Roberts Rules, which really isn't applicable for a board this size, but there's no, there's no requirement at all that a board adopt rules of order. The, the, the chair would determine, and obviously, there's, there's the value of procedure because you have to work under some structure, and so that's why the open meeting law talks about action through a quorum and that votes are taken and votes have to be recorded. So obviously, the vote process is codified in the open meeting law, but the open meeting law doesn't reference Roberts Rules, which has a myriad of procedural items that really are not applicable to a five-member board.
Is that, Tim?
I think so.
And I think just, just, again, to underline, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying this to take a position pro or con with respect to what one member may or may not want to do, but I, I have to advise you on the specific law that you operate under. And that's why, with no, no offense meant towards the MMA, because again, we work with them very closely, but I have to look to specifically what the law says, and the law is, is, is actually very clear. And if you want proper guidance, the book you should have in front of you is the Attorney General's Guide to the Open Meeting Law, which is, which is available online and very accessible.
So in that, it discusses anything that, and you've said it a couple of times and it's in everywhere, that what the chair reasonably expects to hear or to be discussed?
What is anticipated, but reasonably anticipated by the chair.
So if I've brought something up to him, would that be reasonable, reasonably anticipated to be discussed?
Well, I think that's, and I keep hearing, as I know we're going to get into the open meeting law complaints as well, that's an interesting turn on the statute, but that's not what the statute says. The statute says that the agenda must include those items reasonably anticipated by the chair. If you bring something up that is reasonably anticipated, but it's not on the agenda and you ask to be heard on it, that could be promoting an open meeting law violation because someone would, like I said earlier, you just brought something up that, that should, that the chair could have reasonably anticipated and you're bringing it up and it wasn't on the agenda. But that doesn't mean that because it's reasonably anticipated, the chair has to put it on the agenda. The, the agenda has to specify those items. What that means is if something was not reasonably anticipated, could someone bring it up? Someone, these things come up. Like the example I use, is someone comes in with a grant that just came up. As we're sitting here, Jared, being the brilliant individual that he is, suddenly got a grant to, to rebuild the rural field and the, and those playgrounds, and, and it has to be signed tonight or you'll lose that grant. That's not reasonably anticipated, the chair may determine that he's going to allow Jared to bring that forward. But if Jared brought forward, say, the sewer rates and that was, and, and you knew that that was going to come up, that's an issue that's, that is regularly anticipated, suddenly brings it in and says, we've got to vote on those sewer rates, the chair's going to say, I knew about that and you didn't come to me earlier and that, and we can't put that on the agenda because nobody knows about it, there's not, there hasn't been proper notice, that could be promoting an open meeting law violation. So those are just some off-the-top examples.
Any other questions or comments? Speaking of open meeting law violations, we'll go on to the next one.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just go through. I don't know that you need me for these, I know these are going to be solely within.
You don't want to work overtime?
I think, I think we all are already, but.
It is getting long, but I, I think.
Come on, it's done with me.
I just want to thank you very much because I think you've clarified a lot of things and you can go home.
It makes you feel better, I have a 40-minute drive.
I'll be talking to you once we get those other things.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
So we do have four open meeting law complaints by four individuals, basically the same complaint. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, that the process we need to go through is that we need to authorize you to respond to those complaints. And if they want further explanation, then they can go to the Attorney General office. Am I correct in that?
So if I may, the way the process works is there's a very, it's interesting, the open meeting law complaints have to come in on a specific form. And this is what I was talking about earlier, that it used to be, when the district attorneys oversaw the meeting law, you'd just send letters to the district attorneys and each one of them handled them in a different manner. When the Attorney General took authority over the, or it's granted authority, didn't take, it's granted authority, over the open meeting law and the oversight of the meeting law, the Attorney General instituted specific regulations as to the process. Obviously, the enforcement process is, again, codified in the open meeting law, chapter 38, and the, the process is then laid out in this complaint form instruction sheet. So you'll note that each of these complaints comes in in a specific form. The Attorney General will not take cognizance of a complaint that's not laid out on, on the form determined by that, that office. And what it talks about is that the complaint has to be filed within 30 days of the alleged violation and that the body, the public body has to respond within 14 business days of that complaint. So the complaint comes to you, you then have to receive and consider that complaint and determine how you're going to respond to it. Generally, what we recommend, and it's determination by the board, we do recommend that authorization be given to town council to, to make that response, simply because, you know, that's, that's what we do on behalf of the town and we generally know how to respond to these issues rather than having, having the board charged with, with a duty that it may not, it may not want to undertake. So at this point, the, the intent is for each of these complaints to have, have the board receive those complaints, acknowledge the complaints, so we'll take them up individually, although I think after the first one, we may, we may be getting repetitive. So each one will be received, acknowledged, there'll be a deliberation discussion about what was in the complaint and then a determination about authorizing the response, be it town council, you may, you may choose not to authorize town council to respond, although I generally recommend that that be the course of action, not because it'll be more work, but it is because that's, that's what we do on behalf of the town.
So what I need to do is read each one of these complaints out loud?
I think.
How would you advise us to?
I can certainly assist with that if you'd like. I don't think we need to read, each, each member has a copy of the complaint and the complaint's our public record if anybody wants to look at them, but certainly you would have to acknowledge, as is listed on the, on the agenda item, the first one that was listed is Leah Reichner, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that name, although it's a, it's a familiar sounding name. It just, it made, made a complaint on July 1st, 2022, and, and that complaint was, was received by the board. And I'm sorry, I'm just trying to grab the correct document.
So basically, you want us to take a vote, which we're acknowledging the complaint and that we want you to give a response.
And it could be one, but we're going to have to deliberate, so I would indicate what the, what the complaint is generally. You have the complaints in front of you and I do have them in the package, I had them separately, but I see they're in the package, so they're, they're in the order. So thank you for that. So again, this, this was a complaint that was filed on July 1st. It was not received prior to the, the posting of the agenda, but the agenda was amended to include that because it was not anticipated by the chair for eight hours in advance of the meeting. And so that, that's an example of when the chair chose to amend the agenda to include this item because it does require a timely response. And if you don't respond in a timely manner, then, then you're at risk of a finding by the Attorney General.
So what I want you to do is respond. I'm going to make a motion.
But if, but before we do that, I know, and I'm going to, as they go through, my discussion will get more brief, so I.
Oh, that's fine.
I apologize, but I do want, you know, the, the, the gist of this complaint, it has to do with Article 21 of the, the annual town meeting warrant that, that sought to incorporate open, open meeting law requirements within the town's bylaws. And the complaint is that the chair, by not placing on the agenda items that are required under this, this proposed amendment to the bylaw, having to do, I think primarily with, with the public comment topic, but it talks about receiving public comments at selectmen's meetings, that by not including that item, which the chair could have reasonably anticipated, that that constitutes a violation of the open meeting law. And it also goes on to a discussion about the minutes themselves, that certain items were left out of, of minutes, that there was a reference to attachments, but those items were not included. And our recommendation, certainly as I've been saying earlier, is that a response would indicate that notwithstanding the passage of that bylaw, which as you know, is currently under review by the Attorney General, and so it's making its way under, under chapter 30, chapter 40, section 32, it's making its way through the review process by the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit, that, that, that the chair is not obligated to put that on the agenda. In fact, you know, given, given the, the review process, it's appropriate to allow that review to occur. But certainly, in, in my opinion, and I can only issue opinions, I don't issue rulings, in my opinion, the open meeting law was not violated in, in the sense that the chair is not obligated to put a matter on the agenda, even if, even if the chair reasonably anticipates that matter. As to the other item, I've, I've discussed the issue with, with town staff and there seems to be some misunderstanding as to how minutes are reviewed by the board and then retained by the town and filed, and that these attachments are in fact attached to the minutes as they are retained at the, at the town clerk's office. The fact that they might not be available online, your website is not your official repository of documents, anyone who requests the minutes would be able to obtain those minutes with the attachment attached and that would, and those attachments become part of the minutes. That's at the, at the town clerk's office. So again, that's, that's the response that I would anticipate making together with reference to other decisions of the Division of Open Government that are applicable. So that would be my, that's the summary of the complaint and my suggested response. And then I would suggest that the board should entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the complaint and authorize a response by town council or whomever.
So at this time, I'm going to acknowledge the receipt of the complaint and I will ask for a vote from the board to authorize town council to respond to that complaint.
Mr. Chairman, can we have some discussion because I'm not seeing some of the things that the council mentioned? I don't know if the other board members are seeing, I'm not seeing, maybe my packet's not complete? I'm not seeing this.
There was amendments made that were sent later to include the rest of them.
We're on the, on the one, that first complaint.
We'll have a discussion.
Yeah, I must.
Do you mean the first complaint?
No, I think I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I think I have it, I just, I skipped ahead, so I was not seeing.
Yeah, I did the same thing with my pile, too.
So could we have discussion on the decision?
Absolutely. Well, let me, before we do that, let's, I want to, I'll entertain a motion that we vote.
Acknowledge receipt.
Acknowledge receipt and that we vote to have town council address the response.
And now, and there was a motion.
So I need a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion. So we have a motion, we have a second, now we can have discussion, Robin.
So I've seen a lot of boards outside of Oxford address open meeting law complaints. It's not at all abnormal for a board to just itself, without its council, address an open meeting law complaint. The reason I bring that up is obviously we've taken up a lot of town council's time tonight and that kind of adds up. I wouldn't be surprised if this meeting constitutes like 2% of the legal budget for the whole year.
Hold on, does that make sense?
I'd be surprised.
I think the legal budget's a little more than, what we're targeting is 2%, so, but that's fine.
I could do some back-of-the-envelope math. So the, my, my point would be that this is a fairly easy complaint to address and if we address it with the complainant, you know, there's no reason for them to submit it to the AG's office. So, you know, I, in my.
It's already been.
So the, my point would be that, you know, looking at this complaint, you know, it's not clear to me kind of which way it would go, to be honest with you. I mean, it kind of turns on, you know, what, what your understanding was. And so, you know, I feel like we could probably just address this as a board, it's not, not a different complicated complaint.
Well, ultimately, ultimately, this is the decision but, of the board, but the concern I have is the selectman saying this turns one way or another. I think generally, the, the response would be to, to determine that, and, and you don't make determinations, and you don't request determinations of the Attorney General, you simply, you state your position and then the complainant can ask for further review. But the concern is if the board is saying, well, it could turn one way or another and maybe we could resolve it, that would suggest that the board would be in some, in some fashion possibly admitting a violation of the open meeting law. And having, again, done this for a few years, I, I, I think a clear, a clear position could be taken that there was not a violation of the open meeting law. Ultimately, that's determination of the Attorney General and, but.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so what I, what I was getting at, Mr. Chairman, is if you feel that you didn't reasonably anticipate that it was gonna be brought up, you know, if that's your, if that's your feeling, then that's kind of, as far as I would understand it, kind of the end of the complaint, as far as the, you know, the matter being brought up.
If I may, Mr. Chair, that's actually not, that's not the, the issue at hand, because what the complaint says is because you could have reasonably anticipated it, you should have put it on the agenda. Whether you reasonably anticipated it or not, it's your determination whether at all to put something on the agenda.
I understand. Any other discussion?
I have a whole, I don't even understand his thought process. This is a legal document that a citizen of the town and three more have complained and we sent this, this is going to Attorney General, or it has gone to the Attorney General. Who are we to decide whether we should act on this or not? I mean, to me, it's a very simple thing. We've got the complaint, we don't have any authority in this. Town council does as far as I'm concerned. I don't know where you're going with your whole, well, let's discuss this and make it determined. Like you said, you have your opinion, I got my opinion, he's got his opinion, you're talking about a citizen's complaint. This has to go forward. That's my opinion.
May I respond to Selectman LaMarche? So you see this a lot at other boards, you know, open meeting law complaints can run the gambit. Sometimes people make a complaint and it doesn't even have anything to do with the open meeting law, you know? And so, you know, the board could just say in that sort of situation, you know, we don't believe this is, and, you know, then they can press their issue if they wish. But there's, I don't know that there's anything gained by taking town council's time to like sit there, review that, write that up, you know, because we all got the packet when we were elected.
Right.
You know, we can all read through it and if you see something that you don't believe is a violation, it's not a violation, but.
It is a violation. All right, I think we've got a good conversation. I, I am going to go with the recommendation of town council that we acknowledge this, we've already gotten a motion, a second emotion, second, we've had a discussion, okay? I think we need to, the vote is, are we going to, we are going to acknowledge the, the violation.
No, no, acknowledge the complaint.
And we are going to authorize town council to give us a response. So no further discussion? I will call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
No, Dennis?
Yes.
Robert?
No.
Tim?
No.
I vote yes, let the record show that by a motion of three to two, we acknowledge the complaint. We are authorizing town council to go ahead and address this and let us know what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your input.
And so the next complaint is from Brian Devitt. This was, this was filed with the town on, I believe, July fifth. Again, the agenda was amended to include this, this complaint, very similar, I won't go into detail, very similar to the previous complaint discussed, that the, the, there was a violation that the, that the minute, the agenda did not include an item that was requested of the chair, that, that, that would have been known of the chair and that there was a fail, a failure to include attachments in the minutes. So again, similar complaint and again, similar recommendation that we certainly think that there's, and again, it's our opinion, that there's, there's no violation for the chair's not putting an item on the agenda and that we would argue that the attachments were included and thus satisfy the requirements of the open meeting law for, for the, the detail of the, of the minutes.
I'm looking for a notion that we acknowledge the complaint and that we authorize town council to respond to it. I'm looking for a motion.
I will make that motion.
Looking for a second. Okay. Any more discussion? I will call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
I vote yes, let the motion, let the record show it in three to two, we acknowledge it and we are asking town council to respond to it.
The next was a complaint by Connie Devitt. Again, my understanding is was submitted to the town on July fifth. The agenda was amended to include this complaint. Again, the violations that were alleged are that the chair failed to place an item on the agenda, that the chair had reasonable, could reasonably anticipate forty hours prior to the meeting and that the attachments were not included on the minutes and that there wasn't a summary of the discussion. And so it'll be the same, the same position that we would, we would present to the position of the, the board that there was no violation because the chair exercised discretion and was not obligated to put a matter on the agenda and that the, the attachments were made to the minutes appropriately and, and thus satisfy the requirements of the open meeting law for minutes.
I'm looking for a motion that we acknowledge the receipt of this complaint and that we authorize town council to respond to it. Looking for a motion, please?
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Is it Connie or Corinne?
I'm sorry.
I don't know if that makes a important.
It's Corinne Devitt.
Corinne, I'm sorry, I, that was me reading handwriting, it appears to be Corinne.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dennis.
Thank you.
I will call for the vote.
It's triggerflicked. Yes.
Yes. No.
Timmy?
No.
I vote yes, let the record show that the board acknowledged the receipt of the complaint and we authorized town council to respond.
Thank you. The next complaint, again, also I believe came in on July fifth, from Andrew Troyano. And this again indicated that the complaint was with respect to the failure of the chair to put an item on the agenda within four, that the agenda could have reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours and that by not including the, the agenda that he was notified about, that was an intentional violation. And that's the extent of that complaint.
I would look for a vote that we, a motion that we acknowledge the complaint and that we authorize town council to respond to it.
And again, before the motion is made, the, the response would be consistent with the others.
Absolutely.
That we would indicate that there was no violation because the chair was not obligated to place the matter on the, on the agenda.
Thank you.
I will make that motion.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? I will call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. No.
No.
I vote yes, let the record show that the board acknowledges the receipt of the complaint and we authorize town council to give a response.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know that the next matter has with the, I believe that you wanted me to stay until the end of the meeting?
Sure, sure, yes.
Thank you.
We're gonna try to move things along. I do really appreciate people staying here tonight. I think it's been very enlightening, everybody, and we've gotten advice from legal counsel. I plan on following the tradition that the town has always followed, any legal advice we get, we will get from town council. I will acknowledge the fact that they're not batting a thousand, but they're probably batting around eight hundred and I think we're, well, I don't know, maybe you, you know better than I. And we're gonna continue to do that, but.
Can I make a comment?
Can't, Rick. Sorry, can't. All right, Jared, we need Jared up here again. And this is about the composting, composting at Rocky Hill Yard Race. It's gonna address a matter that needs to be addressed. So Jared, please give us your input and all that other good stuff.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll try to rebrief, I know it's been a long meeting. And so composting at Rocky Hill, this is purely, really an informational sort of presentation and discussion for the board. Rocky Hill's been open, you know, in operation for decades now, at least through the early nineties, talking with some of the folks that have been in town a long time. It typically opens in early April. I think most, most residents in area, I shouldn't say area, I should say Oxford licensed landscape contractors are aware of Rocky Hill, the, the leaf and yard waste and brush drop-off pit that lies at the end of Rocky Hill Road. We typically open in early April, we close in late November, early December, all weather permitting, both the opening and the closing date. We typically operate down there Monday through Friday, eight AM to three PM and Saturday, ten to two. We collect, again, we're collecting significant amount of leaf and, and yard waste, grass clippings and other debris from resident homes and landscape contractors that are licensed in Oxford, brush, and it comes at a significant cost to the town. And this has been something that's been tossed around for quite a number of years now is recognizing that cost and trying to devise some methods to reduce those operating costs. So I know my predecessor was considered the notioning of, or the notion rather, of reducing operating hours, thereby reducing the incoming volume of material and/or charging sticker fees for usage of that facility. That got shelved once COVID hit, but now we're, you know, been reemerging from COVID, the pit's being utilized more than ever and we're seeing, you know, an influx of materials certainly, once we've opened the spring and will continue, we'll expect that, you know, through the, the rest of the season here, through the fall. Those costs to dispose of leaf and yard waste while not deemed any sort of, it's a regulated material essentially, a lot of the receiving facilities that we'll end up hauling, we'll, we'll load the material ourselves typically with our own labor and equipment, but the receiving facilities typically want this material to be tested. So it comes at a significant cost by the time we test it and then the hauling fees, we're talking about large trailer dumps, not just little, our little six-wheel dump trucks to be able to do this. We hire out the trucking as well. We're looking at a cost annually about thirty to thirty-five thousand to haul out approximately two to three thousand cubic yards of leaves and yard waste. That's, that's funded out of our municipal solid waste account. So it's a significant cost annually to do that. We also spend about eleven thousand dollars per fiscal year just to chip the brush down that we generate. So the idea, we also, and we monitor the facility, I'm sure people are well aware that we, there is a presence, DPW presence down there, we're trying to regulate the incoming material and monitor what folks are dropping off. We do that three to four days a week. Most recently, you may have seen some senior tax work off program volunteers that have been working down there doing that. But interesting in my discussions a little bit, particularly with folks at Mass D P, talking about some grant opportunities, recycling opportunities, that sort of thing, in, in thinking about revisiting, potentially reducing operating hours, that sort of thing. But what came up in these discussions is the prospects of a municipal partnership. So teaming up with, in a sense, or contracting with a composting firm to come in and operate the site. Now, this is sort of a novel concept, at least in Massachusetts, but there are two communities right now that are doing just this, in Groin and Manchester by the Sea, where they have contracted out for, with a company to come in and operate, maintain, and in some cases improve the site to produce a compost product that actually serves their commercial enterprise. I've talked to my counterparts in both of those communities, they tell me that the way that the contracts are structured and that, in their particular cases, it's a lot of times these services can be offered to the town at zero cost because they're generating a product, again, that sort of facilitates their commercial enterprise. So the, there's a significant value there for the town in that we are now not having to get rid of all of this innate material, that this company will use all of the incoming, or whatever company that it may be, after we go through the procurement channels, will be able to use all of our leaf and yard waste material, potentially even chip the brush down for us and incorporate those chips into the, the compost pile and then produce a product that not only benefits them, but would also be available for public consumption as well and, and town government consumption if we wanted to use it on a particular project. So it is potential cost savings there, where we could reappropriate, reallocate some of those solid waste funds towards, you know, another, another venture, maybe it's a solid waste or hazardous waste drop-off day with a company like N E D T or something to that effect, other recycling opportunities that we can kind of free that money up to, to provide to the town. I just wanted to go ahead, a few other things here, too. So the, the premise is that this company would come in essentially and again, manage, maintain, operate the site. The caveat is that they're now incorporating into that pile a food waste stream and other organics. That's really what, from what I've kind of had some preliminary discussions with a couple companies, that's really what develops this high-quality product that they in turn will sell in, you know, area landscape supply stores. So there's some considerations there, obviously, right? You've got now odor, potential odor control and animal control considerations, the site may become more active, so there may be traffic control considerations. In a lot of cases, in talking with, again, my counterparts in other communities, the companies that may come in and do this, they handle that soup to nuts essentially. So they'll have an animal control, odor control plan in place, they need to regularly report to the DPW director of the town about their ongoing operations, where they're accepting material from. They also set up a nuisance control hotline so that they can typically respond to, to any resident complaints in a timely fashion. So I, again, I think there's considerable value here. This is something that we've been, I've been kind of working through over the past several weeks, months really. There's still, the path forward really entails putting out an invitation for bid and soliciting, soliciting a response from some of these companies. We also intend to have a public forum with Rocky Hill Road of Butters, you know, just to sort of field any questions that they may have. We're hoping that we can stick to hopefully implementing this, starting even as early as the fall, to get the company in or a company to try to, you know, get a foothold and start their operation. You know, another point, important point to note here, too, is that food waste organic and diverting that from waste streams with Mass D P, this is gonna be, is kind of ever-changing regulations around that and they're gonna get tighter and tighter, sort of stricter as to the amounts of food waste and organics that need to be diverted. So, you know, I think this is an opportunity for the town to really be ahead of the curve because there's really none of these facilities in the area when you're talking about only two. So I think it is, it could be tremendous benefit to have, have a facility in town where we wouldn't be relying on maybe a neighboring town, neighbor facility if and when those regulations come down, so.
So what are you looking for us, from us?
Nothing at this point.
Thank you very much and continue pursuing it, or?
It's just, it's sort of purely informational, I've been wanting to get in front of the board for some time just to talk about this a little bit. I was hopeful that we'd be a little bit further along in the procurement process to even at that point have the actual company come in alongside me, but we're just not at that point yet. So there may be another, I may be coming back. Council's here and I've actually engaged them on a, on this, this matter just to make sure, because it's sort of a novel thing for certainly us and communities in general, to make sure we're doing everything on the up and up. So if we need any sort of vote from the board, once we've done that procurement process, then I, then I may be back.
But there will be a public hearing with the Butters, because obviously when you, you know, they'll be informed as to what's going on, right?
Of, of course, that's our intention, again, later this summer, I think, just to keep with our, the sort of schedule that we've got laid out here, would be to have some sort of forum late summer, so.
Any other questions or comments, Robert?
Just quick, it sounds like you, you're not really prepared to kind of, kind of get into the specifics, I totally understand that. I've gotten already questions from residents about this, so there's, there's a lot of interest kind of in the details. So, I mean, I don't know if the chair agrees that maybe we could have the notice for this, not just for a Butters, but kind of a general notification of, of this, because people, there's interest and it's not just people within what the legal definition of an Butter is.
Mr. Chairman, first, we're not saying necessarily it has to be a public hearing, it may just be a community forum, and we have done that in a number of occasions for, somebody's still celebrating out there, Fourth of July, M A is going off. So having community forums is not unusual for us, you know, the extent of which we'll focus a lot of energy is gonna be those people, obviously, who are close by to educate them and to provide them with that information, but, you know, obviously that's open, it will be a public forum and it'll be open to anybody that would like to come.
So to answer Robert's question, we will have a public forum where the people can come in and voice their concerns and ask their questions and all that other good stuff, right? That'll be part of the process?
That's, that's the intention and again, how, how wide of a net we cast.
So to answer Robert's question, we will have a public forum where the people can come in and voice their concerns, and ask their questions, and all that other good stuff, right? That'll be part of the process?
That's, that's the intention, and again, how, how wide of a net we cast. I mean, the, the initial thought there was a Butters on Rocky Hill Road, because that's essentially your main point of egress to the site. They stand to be potentially most impacted from any increase in traffic, which may be nominal, but it, it could be a more active site, based on my discussions with, with these couple of the towns, so.
Okay.
But that's.
So we will come up with a.
Yep.
Can we put it on the town's website, just like we did with the roads forum, so people know?
I think when we get to that point, we're not at that point yet.
Yeah. I, I think we consistently, as professionals, when we go ahead and do public forums, we amply, actually advertise it, not just on the town's website, but through our social media, and our electronic message board, and also in our newsletter, if it comes in at the same time, that can get published, but more importantly, also on our cable. So we're here tonight, not because the board asked us to do it, but because the professionals asked one another, what's a good time to think about talking about this publicly, and there's no action that the board is required. So we're asking our director to give some high-level information, and obviously, if we get to that next step, as a, as a managerial decision, we'll most certainly have some kind of public forum, is what, what is committed to. And I think we are quite capable of being able to advertise or be noted to do that as we do already.
So to answer your question you asked, Robert, we'll put it on the website, and it'll be part of the process that we go through. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much, good luck. We always want to say, the money you save, we can put into cameras. How about that?
It's gotta stay in the solid waste, but yeah.
You're saving the money, so you wanna be a. Thank you very much, Jared, for staying. You've been very helpful tonight. Well, it's getting late, so, Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you can give us a short version of your report, that would be nice.
Well, I will give you the version that's, you know, best summarized, but, so that we can avoid questions later on. How's that sound? My first item on the agenda, Oxford included in the Transportation Resources and Climate Bond Bill. This spring, Governor Baker filed a $9.7 billion bond bill to advance and support significant investments in our Commonwealth's Roads, Bridges, Railways, Transit Agencies, and Environmental Infrastructure. The House recently took up the bill, and because of the advocacy from our DPW director and myself, two, our two representatives, two amendments were included for the town of Oxford. The first is a $1 million amendment for Main Street reconstruction from Front Street to Fair Lawn Ave., which is not at the point of which it's ready to be submitted for funding, but this would be able to go towards that in the future, if it were so deemed by the executive administration. And also, $1 million for construction replacement or maintenance of dams, bridges, culverts, sewers, and other water infrastructure in Oxford. These amendments were filed by Representative Frost McKenna, and I want to thank them personally for their advocacy, as usual. They put us on their radar and do their job. The bill now moves to Senate Ways and Means, and we expect before the end of the legislative session, it will have been passed on to the governor and hopefully approved. Number two, permanent changes to election laws. I think this is very important, because it impacted particularly our town clerk's office. Governor Baker recently signed into law an election reform bill that makes a pandemic-related election changes permanent, expanding some voting opportunities in time for the next statewide election in September. Significant changes include the following: changing the voter registration deadline from 20 days before an election to 10 days before an election; mail-in ballots for presidential, state, and municipal elections; automatic voter registration, and expanding voting access procedures for incarcerated individuals. Some of these changes take place 30 days after the bill is signed into law, and others will go into effect in January. Obviously, like I said, this will have implications for our preparations for elections. Property auction update. At the last board meeting, I announced the town would be proceeding forward with an auction of 36 Coburg Ave. and Southbridge Road Parcel 9-A-28. Zika's Group Auctioneers is planning the advertising and overseeing the details of the auction. We finalized the date, the location for the auction, which is gonna be Wednesday, July 27th, at 12:00 noon, at the actual 36 Coburg Ave. property. The town's also advertising the auction on our website, social media, and newsletter, which is out to print. Health Director wins award. Oh, I would like Rika Sterrett, who's been very patiently waiting there. Rika is our Director for Public Health. She, as you know, has a number of advanced degrees and certifications, and she was recently honored with a National Environmental Health Association Certificate of Merit. The award recognizes individuals who made a significant contribution to environmental health programs within the state. Ms. Sterrett has and was nominated by the Massachusetts Environmental Health Association, and thereby, this is a national recognition for outstanding contributions to environmental health profession. She was also named, and I know, I haven't even finished, because there's more to the great story. She was also recently named Vice President of the Massachusetts Environmental Health Association, where she has been instrumental in organizing training events and regional conferences for other professionals. Oxford is clearly lucky to call her our own. I want to say thank you, and I want to say congratulations. And I don't know if you want to come up and say anything, you've been so quiet there, and I know you've had a long day.
Are you still awake?
I'm still awake. No, I just want to say thank you. I was surprised when the town manager reached out to me that she'd gotten the email, so just grateful for the recognition. I know I have gotten a lot of training from my colleagues, so I'm just happy to give back to the environmental health profession, so thank you.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for doing what you do.
The next item, after that wonderful positive news, is to also have another piece of positive news, the Huguenot oak update. One of the things I think you might have seen in our last meeting was this board over here, that's no longer here, that's being put around the community, that had a number of large wooden clocks on it. So as many of the community are aware, the difficult decision was made to remove the Huguenot, the historic Huguenot oak located on the corner of Huguenot Road and Russell Lane, due to its declining health of the tree. Over the last several years, the tree ceased growing and was becoming a safety hazard, and was deemed a priority one, has a tree, by our Tree Worn Wayne Burlock. Steven Esposito, our Operations Manager for the Oxford DPW, crafted several beautiful clocks and a plaque using wood salvaged from the oak that will be displayed across town buildings to keep the legacy of the oak alive. I want to thank Steven for going above and beyond. I know with the packets of the, the board have these number of clocks that he's handcrafted, they're quite beautiful. We have an example of another plaque down in the town manager's office, which is going up above our Boston Kane, I still call it. So I want to say thank you for keeping that legacy of the oak alive. Steven, you didn't have to do it, you certainly have a craftsmanship that we didn't even know about, and he's probably blushing right now on TV, he can hopefully see me, but.
I think he's in bed, he's gotta get up early.
Yeah. You're right, you're right, he'll be up there. But thanks again, Steven. The next item is to inform the board, sewage overflow notification. I probably should add Jared do this, but it is, you know, coming from the manager's office, because he has worked with us on this. So there is a relatively new law, hint for Lika Klonsel, entitled "An Act Promoting Awareness of Sewage in Public Waters." That aims to inform the public when untreated sewage flows into Massachusetts waters. The law requires the town to provide some form of public notification of such an event within two hours of discovery. Residents can now subscribe or receive notifications if such an event should happen by subscribing to Sanitary Sewer Overflow, or SSO, under urgent alerts on our town's website subscription management module. It would be unlikely that such an event would occur due to the nature, age, and size, which we heard earlier from our DPW, of our collection system. However, such an event, if it were to occur, the subscription would allow one of the methods we would be using to notify the public, and that is now active on our website. Historic Commission. It's with regret that I informed the board that Howard G. Holbrook has submitted his resignation as a member of the Historical Commission due to personal health reasons. We want to thank Mr. Holbrook for his 11 years of service to the town of Oxford and to the commission. I've received a request from a member of the community to be appointed to the commission. This appointment is an appointment by the manager, subject to approval of the board of selectmen, and therefore, I'll be asking the chairman to place this appointment on a future agenda. And I do once again want to say to Mr. Holbrook, for his many years of service, 11 years is not an easy feat to hold on to for volunteer service, and we thank him for that contribution to the town of Oxford. We are deeply grateful. Railroad herbicide application. The town has been notified by CSC Transportation that they will be performing herbicide application to manage weeds along the railroad. The application will begin on or before July 5th, and will conclude on or before August 5th. Interested parties can contact Steven Herzog at the available email of steven.herzogwoodplc.com for more information about vegetation management along the railroad. I say this because oftentimes, people will ask, what are people doing along the railroad during this time period? And usually, it's this, and they're responsible for it, not the town. So we ask people to contact them with questions. Community Events. The first Movies on Main event will be taking place on Wednesday, July 13th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. We're featuring the movie Do Little. We're asking people in the community to come, bring a chair, bug spray, the food vendor will be Potato Potato, and we'll be offering, none other than tater tots and fries. And there will be kids entertainment, entertainment, and food trucks for all the movies. We'll begin at 7:00 p.m. with a movie playing at dusk. We once again had informed the board previously that we have dates all the way through the end of August with movies playing that will be very, hopefully entertaining to the public and bring people downtown. We also have several upcoming concerts on the common. July 10th, we will be having DW and Shake Makers, which is a family-friendly, lively, get-up-and-dance music. On Sunday, the 17th, we'll have a band called Track Down, which is a five-piece classic rock cover band with hits from the 70s and 90s, and both Sunday shows are from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Oxford Free Public Library will also be holding a Comic Book Day on July 12th, which is a Tuesday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. There'll be comic-themed crafts, activities, a caricature artist, and we ask preregistration is required for the artist, and kids are encouraged to wear a costume. It's not too late to sign up for the full and half-day summer programs at Carbuncle by visiting our website at oxfordmaymirec.com for all the available offerings. I appreciate the board's attention, and I appreciate listening to the requests from department heads to try to expand our reach on communications about upcoming departmental-sponsored events. Thank you.
We have some very dedicated citizens, because there's still people out here, and we are at the home stretch. At this time, I would like to open the meeting for Selectmen, Community Announcements, and it's limited to recognition of good deeds, voluntarism, jobs well done, milestones and anniversaries, excellent in service to the community, weather-related issues, announcements of local or community activities, or charitable needs or events. So, Amy, do you have anything?
I am all set, thank you.
Thank you for the minute.
I think it's gonna rain tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that weather report, Dennis. You better get out. Robert, you have anything?
Yes, I'll be, I'll be quick.
You don't have to be quick.
So the, I saw that the, the town had posted to its website a gardening contest. I'm very excited to see the results of that. I hope that we'll be able to see all the contestants. I don't know if the manager's property is, is in the contest. I hope not, because I want other people to have a chance. And also, I'd like to announce to the community that the comprehensive budget is available. So the, the draft version is now a final version, since we've had town meeting, I highly encourage everybody to read through it, it's very voluminous. And if anybody can't get on the town's website, you're welcome to call me at 508-499-9871. I'll make sure you get a hard copy if you're not, just watch cable and you don't go on the town website.
Thank you, Robert. Tim?
I just had one thing, I just wanted to, I know it's a little bit past the time, you know, when they're kind of discussing things, but I just wanted to thank the school committee for allowing public comment in all their meetings. I believe involvement in community decisions that affect them is paramount in running a successful board or committee, so I just wanted to recognize them for that.
And I have nothing. It's time to go home. I will call for a vote for adjournment.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
I'll call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. See you in two weeks. Thank you, folks.